For January 26, 2023. We will be just recording this. We're not live streaming. Recording will be available in the future.
Probably next week.
Probably next week. We look forward to hearing from all our departments tonight in preparation for our retreat, which is happening this weekend. Welcome, everyone, and I'd like to turn it over to Town Manager Page at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple opening comments. First, I'm your substitute emcee today. I was Aaron was going to be facilitating our presentations. We've had a rough couple of weeks with illness of our staff. No COVID, but at least no COVID in this room. But so we appreciate your patience with us as we got your retreat materials ready. And as we reorder the order of our department presentations tonight to help out with some of those logistical things. So we delivered the paperwork to you on Thursday. And what we've provided to you is the exact same set of presentations, but you have some notes pages behind each section that would be an opportunity if you want to take any notes to take with you to the retreat. We'll be handing you the rest of your retreat binder as you leave this evening, and there is a section in the binder that you can just insert this right back in. As we we've also put the new order for you, and we'll give you a couple minutes to flip through and find the person since that we we've readjusted the order. So we're going to get started. And again, this is speed dating because we want to give the later departments just as much time as those front departments. So we've set it up so that the presenter is going to come here and speak. It's a conversation, probably as much as a presentation, so we want everybody to be relaxed and comfortable. Eric has set up the time so that both council and the speaker will know how much time we've allotted to each speaker. At about halfway through, if I've understood what Eric told me, it's going to beep, and that's really where the department head is going to need to kind of wrap up. And then we have just a short bit of time for council to ask, I'd say, high-level questions. Remember, a lot of what you may ask, you can do also at the retreat. We've got multiple note takers that are going to also capture all those questions and translate them into FAQs following the retreat as well. Have I forgotten anything?
Microphones. If you have, would you please make sure you're wearing, for the purpose of the recording, please make sure you're wearing your your Lippell mic. Thank you.
Great. And I'll do my best to try to facilitate questions and make sure that everyone gets a chance. And it will be up to us to try to finish the questions within the time allotted. I know that's something that's difficult.
And if you don't want to ask, if you make the note, we can capture them all weekend and put them together. I'd encourage you to keep it big picture. Don't start asking about specific things. Get the sense of what our departments do, and those types of questions would be beneficial for everybody here as you go into a retreat to talk about more details. Great. We're going to start with our administration and budget, and Brandon is going to make that presentation for us.
Thank you, Martha. Good evening. Sorry to disappoint. I am not Aaron Hudson. So if you want to, you know, maybe close your eyes and envision Aaron as I talk, that may make this more presentable to you, but we'll see how we go. So again, thank you for your time tonight. I'm going to share with you some updates in regards to our general government, particularly administration, and the Budget and Strategic Management Group. So if you look at my driving, I'm driving. Okay. So on this page, this just talks about the general departments. I would draw your attention to a couple of things, particularly a couple of positions that weren't there when we had this conversation a year ago. One of those, obviously, is our new Assistant Town Manager. We've talked a lot about capacity at the administrative level in our organization and making sure that we have the resources to do the work that you would like to see done that we know we need to do. So Giselle has been nothing short of fantastic in that role in bringing additional resources to us. And then you also see, you didn't see this alignment before in terms of the Budget and Strategic Management Team, so that is also a newly expanded group that's brought some resources together to better focus on those roles. And I would particularly point out the Small Business Specialist that is a result of some of the grants that we've received, some of the funding from the federal government we've received to try to do a better job and expand our work with small businesses. On the right-hand side there, you see that there's just a few years of experience in Morrisville and a decent number of years in public service. And then there's some different certifications and awards that we have received or achieved as well. So the highlights for these departments, again, you saw some of that reorganization in budget and strategic management, so one of that is establishing a Grants Review Team. That team has already shown some success, not only in tracking grants but making additional applications, looking in places perhaps we didn't look before. And of course, some of that is coming through our partnership with the TJ cog as well. And if you look at what's on there, $590,000 already in fiscal year '23 with with some time to go. Obviously, I don't need to tell you a lot about a new high school coming to Morrisville. You can all smile with me for just a moment if you'd like to. Town Center, our public-private partnership, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that on another slide. Organizational shifts to improve efficiencies and look at succession planning. Again, part of that is our Assistant Town Manager, part of that is our Budget and Strategic Management Team, and some other smaller adjustments in other departments. And then obviously, we'll spend a lot of time this weekend talking about long-range financial planning. I won't burst that bubble now. On the other side, again, talking about some longer-term strategies, particularly financial, looking at emerging and diverse interests. Again, our community continues to grow, continues to be more diverse, so we're very proactive in that regard. Also focused on shovel-ready projects. We've heard you say that a number of times. We are interested in that as well, so we're working in that direction. And then the unfortunate reminder of inflationary overages that is touching almost everything we do. Current initiatives, the Town Center, again, you are very familiar with that. We continue to make progress on that. We are closing in on the pre-submital from SING to be able to get some feedback, additional feedback from our staff before they actually make their submittal for the development agreement and for the rezoning application. We anticipate coming back to you probably in the next month or two. I want to make sure we have some meaningful impact and updates for you, so we'll be talking more about that with you in either a presentation or perhaps in a work session coming up. We have a renewed or perhaps an enhanced emphasis on diversity, equity, and inclusion. I would say that we're being very careful about how we approach that, doing that in a very measured way, not trying to just throw something out there to say, look what we did, but to make sure that it's meaningful and impactful and spreads throughout the organization. So you'll continue to see work being done on that. Small business programs, again, looking at a variety of things. Again, we have a new part-time staff person. We also have, looking at micro grant administration and some of these other local activities that we have supported and tried to help advertise with the community. Strategic updates, you hear us say strategic all the time. That's a great thing. So we continue to have our department business plans. We always are looking to align the strategic plan with decisions we make and projects we undertake. And again, just looking to maximize our capacity there through being strategic. And then finally, grant applications, again, just an example of some of the good work being done through our Grants Team, where you might not have seen all of those a year ago because of the fact that they're much better coordinated and are working collaboratively with the TJ Looking ahead to FY 2024 and beyond, you know, we continue to, in all candor, I think, struggle a bit in terms of human resources, in the sense that it just is very difficult to hire now. We also face challenges, in some cases with retention. And when I say it's a challenge with human resources, of course, that's not a reflection on Lori and her team. That's just a reflection on the world we live in. They are looking at doing a lot of different things creatively, recognize that it's not the same old, same old, and we need to be flexible, so really focus there and also on our long-term needs and expectations. Partnership solutions, we continue to try to make sure that we're being effective and efficient by partnering with others in the area. In many cases, that's the town of Cary. You know, with some of the things we're already doing with them, we're also working with them now on some additional traffic signal cooperation. We also continue to work with them on the CAM model, particularly through the Dispatch Center. Lots of opportunities out there with Wake County. They continue to be a strong partner. And then again, our solutions coming from our partnership combined with the school system and with Wake Tech, which is going to result in a high school and is also going to result in some open space for the town, that we'll continue to talk about how we'll develop that in the coming years. Project execution, you will hear a lot from Mark Spanioli in regards to capital projects. We are doing more than we've ever done. We're spending more than we've probably ever spent. There is an incredible workload there, but also a lot of progress being made on a number of projects. Again, the Town Center is there. Morrisville Carpenter Road, which we anticipate closing in the next few days, so we're almost done there, which is exciting. And of course, give us a few months, and we're going to invite you back to Fire Station Three, and it's going to look a lot different than when you sign a beam or or cut a ribbon on the site. So it's an amazing facility. If you drive by now, you can really see that building out of the ground and see what it's going to look like, and it's it's fantastic. Lastly, economic initiatives. Again, we continue to collaborate with the Chamber of Commerce. We continue to evaluate any opportunities that come to see if we're a good fit for those. And you've seen how some of that has worked. If you drive down McCrimmon Parkway Extension now, all you see is construction going on, which again is amazing. That's going to be a game changer for the town as well as those different companies that are coming in there. Also, again, just always Jeannie, her team particularly, looking out for our future economic Only halfway, so I'm almost done. We're in good shape. I'm not going to read to you all of the facts and figures here. You can do that for yourself. I will point out just a couple of interesting ones, one of which is that did a little calculation, and the town clerk manages 1.3 million pages over a terabyte of information that are public records that he's responsible for keeping up with and tracking. You don't usually think about that. I think particularly when we do it all on the screen and it's all electronic, but it's it's an amazing amount of information. And then you'll see in our fun facts just some different things that have impacted individuals on our staff as well over the past year. And I will then conclude by just some of the pictures. Again, I think these are all good. They they look at our staff, they look at our projects, they look at some of the work that's been done, certainly involving our team, not all, just our team, but certainly our Morrisville team that's been hard at work. So with that, I will pause.
So Aaron is the one that got married and didn't tell anybody, so I got asked that question. And I have not been to Scotland, so don't count that one on me. All right, I'm going to turn it over to council.
Looking around, I think you guys have been pretty thorough. Mayor President Jones?
So I did that two quick things. On the chart there, Brandon, we talked about grant funding and the 61% CWMTF remind me, I have been racking my brain trying to remember.
Clean Water Management Trust Fund.
Thank you. Thank you. I was like, I know I have to know this, but I cannot figure it out. Thank you. And then the only other question I have is if you could just elaborate, I don't want to make any assumptions on the understanding a transitioning tax base. What do you what do you mean when you say that?
So I think, yeah, what we're beginning to see, obviously, is that you know as well as anyone that we are running out of room to to develop per se. So we're going to see that begin to transition. The good news is, I think, that we're transitioning into biomanufacturing and life sciences where that's available, so that's going to have a meaningful impact. But then, as you go beyond that, we're also going to need to recognize that we're going to begin to see limitations on what can be built new and what redevelopment means for us in terms of our tax base as well.
Okay, thank you. I want to make sure when.
Excellent.
Yeah. Well, I think the redevelopment opportunity, you know, you've heard me say this for years. I think the redevelopment opportunities are huge here in this town, so so good. I thank you for that.
On our radar.
And thank you for talking about the recruitment and retention. That clearly is the heart of everything we do, so.
And you will hear more about that.
And focusing on that, that is really important. It's it's the people in this organization that make it as fabulous as it is, so I appreciate that.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Ralph, please.
Yeah. Brandon, I just have two questions to clarify. Can you give a little bit more details about the traffic signal management and future CAM dispatch contract increases?
Sure. So from a traffic management standpoint, we have previously had some traffic lights that were managed by DOT and then others that have been managed by the town of Cary. So there are discussions going on where there is the possibility that we would be able to reach agreement with the town of Cary to where they would manage all of our traffic lights, and that would give us potentially some efficiencies. It would also certainly give us a different level of service. You know, DOT provides a certain level of service that they can to the best of their ability. We just see a little different level of service when we work with the town of Cary. As far as CAM or the, again, the Cary Apex Morrisville Communications and Response Team or Group, so just looking at that, so we're in three years now into the ILA, the agreement that we have with Cary to dispatch for us. And so we were essentially held harmless for the first three years of that in terms of no increases to our costs. While things were evaluated and we figured out what that looked like and and again, continued to work with that group. So we're now coming out of that three years of hold harmless. So you will see in the FY '24 budget, when you get some of that additional information, that we anticipate some cost increase there that we've not seen for the first three years of that partnership.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Those are two?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Councilmember Ralph, please.
Just one question. Could you go back a slide to where you you had those four areas? So economic initiatives, could you address a little bit about the process of the Chamber of Contract Renewal and in terms of our process of, and forgive me for if I should already know this, but kind of like our existing staff resources that we deploy for engagement with our small businesses? Because I just, and we can't answer that today, but that's something I'd like to see in terms of just metrics and how we're evaluating our contract with the Chamber.
So you actually have a section of your retreat planned just to talk about economic development on Sunday. I think some of your answers will come out in that session.
I just want to thank you for bringing that up, and that's all I got for now.
Anyone else? Okay. Nice job, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. Thanks for going easy on me. Appreciate it.
So if you want to thumb through and find information technology, Rick Ralph is going to join us, our CIO. While he's coming up, two comments. One is, you know, we've made significant, I'll say, efforts and strides and commitments towards that Grants Program. Dawn Rabb, who's helping facilitate that, is here. So a special shout out to Dawn for all her efforts to support all the departments in looking for grant opportunities. And then just as our departments present, some may stay to support their fellow departments as they can, others have some conflicts or commitments. So some may leave, some may stay, just as they need to do that. So just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you.
All right. Rick?
Great. Good evening, council.
Just one moment, please.
I just say one thing before the department heads start to understandably leave when they can. I just hope that you would all convey my congratulations to those of those of your new employees who were here. I apologize for being late tonight, and just tell them how glad I am and that I hope to do soon.
Okay. Great. It's to you, Mr. Ralph.
Absolutely. It's my privilege to speak with you tonight about the IT Department and the highlights over the past year and the great things that that we've done. But before we get into that, we've got to talk about the individuals that make it happen. And you've got eight individuals here in our department with over 115 years of combined experience, almost 15 years average per employee. And they have the skills, they have the knowledge, but it only tells part of the story. Every one of those individuals you see there are compassionate, they're willing to serve, and they love helping fellow staff members. Every single one of them goes above and beyond, willing to help whoever, whether it's within their job duties or not. And I cannot say enough about this group of individuals and what they're able to accomplish. We have, we had an incident previously last year, early on, and within one hour, the entire group collaboratively worked together to identify the issue and work together to remediate and and deny any kind of further issues. So it was a real testament to this group and how they work together and what they're able to accomplish. So want to highlight what they they do. We did add a part-time individual whom you've all met. She's back in the back room now producing this this meeting, and want to recognize her and what value she adds to the organization. And when we brought that production in-house of our council meetings, work sessions, and our PCB, we saw a huge benefit and value from that position. We saw our archived views of those meetings double. We saw our live views triple, and I truly believe it's the work that she's doing and the stuff that she's been able to accomplish in the short time that she's been here. So we've really seen a lot of value in that position. So our highlights, want to just touch based on a couple of these. We did go through a comprehensive security assessment through the NC National Guard. They assess based on the strictest Department of Defense standards and guidelines, and we got glowing recommendations and review from Lieutenant Colonel that did our review assessment or assessment review, sorry. He was impressed by the size of our organization and our current security posture. And one of the outlines, they measure in three categories, minor, moderate, and critical. And we ranked on the low end of minor. So again, a true testament to the technologies we put in place and the individuals we have doing the work securing our organization. We have received national and international recognition for our Smart City initiatives. One award that we did receive last year was the IDC Smart Cities North America Award. It was in the smart water category for the Cedar Fork District Park Initiative. We also were a finalist in a different category for our amenities monitoring and our Smart City Dashboard, so wanted to highlight that as well. We did begin 3D printing, some enclosures for our Smart City sensors. And why this is a highlight and why it's important is because we're able to cut that those supply chain issues. We were having problems getting some of the equipment in for our smart waste sensors. And so working with a local IoT startup, we were able to procure a 3D printer, get trained on it, and start printing those enclosures, and they have now completed months ahead of when we would actually get those sensors through a manufacturer. So it has saved time, it has paid for itself already just through that one project. It does allow us the flexibility to innovate and create custom sensor enclosures for these different projects that we're able to do. On the right side, some influences. We've talked about some of the challenges for our cybersecurity threat landscape. It is constantly changing. We're always having to stay ahead of that. Credit to our town staff in general. They really take to some of the security awareness training and are frontline of defense with a lot of those threats. It is important to make sure that the technology that we are deploying, our users are adopting, and they are utilizing those systems. So we have started implementing additional training to get a lot of those users aware of the systems we're putting in place and how to use those systems. Touch base on a couple of our initiatives. Our hardware replacement plan, it is annual replacement plan, and it's important for a couple of reasons. One, it's how our staff are able to do their jobs. If we allow aging equipment, we start to have outages. When I came on four years ago, we did a survey just within a year, and one of the biggest complaints was aging hardware and the inability to do their jobs. That is not the case at this time. We've turned that around with a good replacement plan. Our Smart City initiatives, we've got several standouts here with our open data, and you'll see this on a later slide about the use of that system. And we have released, I believe it's six data sets and a data story on that platform, and it's garnered a lot of attention and a lot of use from that system. Our mobile app development, you'll hear in your news and notes when you do get it in a couple days or a day. We have finished the development on Phase One and Phase Two. That beta release is going to be available to IT Department on Friday. Once we do some internal testing, we'll release that to council for additional testing and feedback. Once that feedback round has completed, we'll release to the general public. We have our Smart City Steering Committee meeting. In fact, we have one tonight. I'm not able to attend, obviously, so we've got Danny Riley there, and that group has been great. They're very involved, and they do a lot of our initiative review, a lot of feedback, and have really helped drive some of these initiatives. So looking ahead, again, we've talked about the hardware replacement plan, why it's important. We've talked about security. While we are a secure organization and we do a lot, we can never stop trying to get ahead of those threats. So we do have multiple initiatives identified for continued enhancement, whether it's something we've identified or something we've identified through that security assessment. And then our ongoing Smart City initiatives, we have Phase Three lined up for the mobile application. We will look at getting that developed, and we'll reach out to council and our Steering Committee as well as the public for additional initiatives and feature sets that we'll release in that phase. One thing I will print, mention is our Town Center, a lot of opportunities there with some Smart City initiatives that we don't necessarily touch now. Smart parking, since we will have additional parking, that can be integrated with the mobile application to identify open parking spaces as well as some other initiatives by having a more densely populated area. A couple facts and figures here. I won't highlight all of these, but a couple really important ones. That open data use, we really saw an increase by releasing some of those popular data sets, whether it was public safety, sustainability, or other items. And then our Wi-Fi clients deploying additional park Wi-Fi, we've seen a heavy increase there as well. And then just some pictures here to highlight what we call our ninth employee there is our 3D printer. It puts in more hours than than all of us, so it's printing usually 24 hours a day. And then our Smart City Dashboard, just highlighting that, we see a continued increase there with over 2,000 unique views.
Thank you, Rick. All right. Counsel.
I just have one quick question. The National Guard assessment, will that be an annual thing or is that a one time?
So we usually do security assessments every other year, and then we do a PIN test on those alternating years as well. So the National Guard actually offers a PIN test as well, so we will do that in 2023.
Okay. Excellent. Councilmember Abadi.
I just, well, two things. I just wanted to say that I know that we're going in the right in the right direction IT-wise when the first thing that you start talking about is your people and how willing they are to help other people, and that that being your focus, the whole point of IT is to solve problems, to increase efficiency, to, you know, and I think that when that's your focus, you really can't go wrong there. You know, it's not always about new stuff, new tools. The other thing is, I noticed that you referred to in the presentation, a fully, a fully cloud strategy. Is that really, is that really your focus, like nothing on-prem, all cloud migration?
Yes, so eventually, that's the goal, again, keeping us away from the data center space and having to manage and maintain that. And we use multiple cloud providers, so we do use our Microsoft Azure Platform as well as Amazon's AWS. So we do try to use and diversify that cloud portfolio, but that is our goal, again, stop managing systems in house, stop updating, stop maintaining those systems. So so far, we've seen a benefit from that, and we hope to continue to see that.
That's great. That's ambitious.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilmember Ralph?
Yeah. Excellent job. I first of all just want to say that the culture and environment in your department is unbelievable. I've seen it over the years. People are so excited to be working, so you should be commended for developing that.
Thank you.
I guess a couple of questions. First of all, I think that we were really grateful for the national recognition you're getting, and so whatever we can do to support more national recognition, I mean, recently, I know someone from Cary got, you know, on a federal task force for IoT, so I really would like to see if you or some of our staff. So I really would like to see if you or some of our staff could serve at a national level where we can continue to bring recognition. The, the one question I had was, and I don't know whether we've had conversations in the past about, are we thinking about collaborating with Cary on 311 eventually services? Because I know they have one, or is there just not enough of a need for that in Morrisville?
Yes, so that, that's, you know, a conversation really that's, I think, the two towns would have outside of IT. We can help with the technology behind that and those integrations. But really a 311 system would have to come from that top down since it would be utilized by our residents in all of our departments. We are releasing a citizen concern portal that will act as an online version of that. It won't be a full 311 system and that will be integrated into the mobile app where you can, while you're out, take a picture of something, submit that concern and upload it to a portal for staff to take a look at.
Okay. And my final comment is that I think that the success of our smart city initiatives in Morrisville, clearly we've distanced ourselves from many of the cities in Wake County and possibly the state. I just hope that when we learn more about the open data, that we can collaborate and partner with Riot and do more of those kinds of events, maybe with our smart city committee having like data hackathons and things like that. Typically, you know, Raleigh and Cary are doing those things, but we have such a tech savvy community here, I think there's a great opportunity for us. So whatever we can do to help you do that.
Absolutely. And we do have, we're in talks now with our open data provider and they're looking to partner with us on a Morrisville open data challenge, so a mod challenge. And, and that's something that will serve similar to a hackathon, but it takes some time to get those kind of programs going. But we are in talks with that vendor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
I think I see Councilmember Garamella and then Mayor Protam Johnson.
Yeah, Ralph, I have a quick question, like, you know, regarding the pen test, you said you're doing every other year, but the amount of, I'm a little concerned about that, you know, if we can do it more frequently, especially when you're rolling new, you know, things, because that is the only way you can defend until unless you're using Azure Defender or something, you know. I don't know what you're using for that stuff, but I'm, I'm a little worried, like, doing every other year is like a long time.
Yes, so that is the full pen test. We do work with a security vendor to do smaller pen tests when we do roll out different applications or systems. So the full pen test is every other year, the full assessment is every other year. But, but there are times in which we do these assessments and pen tests as we do different projects.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Okay, Mayor Protam Johnson, please.
So just two quick comments, Rick. First, congratulations on the fabulous results from the assessment, from the security assessment. That, when you look at organizations, not just governmental organizations, but organizations, any organization across the nation, that, that's their biggest threat is being some kind of violation in, into the system. And so congratulations on that. That's not a small feat. So, and I know that's really difficult for government entities too. So congratulations. And I'm as proud of you and your department as you are of your department, because that is quite evident, the way you started. So that you all came together recently and, and worked on an issue to, to stop whatever it was. So I appreciate all that and want to make sure that we acknowledge that again, because that's important to say over and over. The other thing I want to say is thank you for giving us the insight into the 3D printing and what you're using it for. I'm not sure, except for this moment right here where you all come before us, we would probably not know and understand how that's helping with supply chain issues. So thank you for including that.
You're welcome.
That's really important and thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
So I don't see anyone else, just to wrap us up, if there's more of a parking lot, like what three things are you looking to accomplish in the next year? How are you looking to harden your department or what programs, policies, other than the app, which you've already mentioned?
Absolutely. So a lot of these community programs, like we said, for the open data challenge, as well as a community development of the piece of the application. So the gamification piece, which I know is important to council to be included in that application, we're looking involving the community to be a part of that development. So we'll do some kind of challenge there that they will work with the mobile app developer that we currently use and help design and implement that system. So a lot of those, the way we can get the community involved more than just in-house, I think will be a big success in implementing some of these public facing solutions.
That's great, because I think people don't really think of IT as public facing and you're trying to create that opportunity for us.
Absolutely.
Which is wonderful. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick.
I think you're good.
Great, thank you.
Next up, a new kid on the block, Jeff Brown, our Public Works Director.
Satish, can you turn around so I can see it? I can't see the white. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Eric, in the sake of keeping everybody on time, if you want to set that as 12 minutes, you're welcome. We got sacrificed for everyone else. Okay, Mayor, members of council, it's an honor and privilege to be here tonight. Thank you for the management team for allowing us to have this opportunity to come before you. Just want to make a note of our cover slide there, that was Operation Greenlight, where we initiated to turn some of our town buildings green in honor of our veterans at Veterans Day. We took that opportunity also to extend that into Christmas. So during the holidays, we put some red lights in there as well, since we already had some green lights. So took advantage of that opportunity. About our department, our department is 25 individuals, hardworking individuals, and I'm proud to be able to lead that group. And they have welcomed me into their fold. I am fastly approaching next week, my six month anniversary. It doesn't seem that long, but time does fly. But it has been an honor to be here. Our staff, as you may remember, was recognized back in June, excuse me, were awarded in June, but recognized in August for the Public Works APWA recertification as accredited agency. So I want to commend the staff and all their hard work and efforts in making sure that our standards are well-kept and the work that we do matches that to receive that accreditation or reaccreditation. We have about 45% of our staff that is professionally certified or licensed in their field. And we've got a cumulative years of service of 135 years. So again, for a small staff, that's cumulative years here with the service for the town. So that's not total years, that's just their years here with the town. So, you know, you see the breakdown of our organization. So let's move on and talk about some highlights and some accomplishments. You know, we have been very successful in our sustainability efforts. We, over the time since I've been here, have brought solar panels, implementation on PSMS that has been activated. We just activated that this month. We also had EV stations added at our Church Street Park. Again, you know, that matches, coincides with our master sustainability plan and the efforts and timelines identified with that. We continue to make enhancements at our properties, you know, our parks and town properties. We accomplished our paving project, our annual resurfacing project. We were able to accomplish that before the end of December, which is a huge win for us. So we were able to get that done and, you know, now we can work and focus our efforts on preventative maintenance into spring. Pavement condition survey, we completed for our greenways. You know, that's the same thing that we do every other year for our streets. So we took that same philosophy and looked at our greenways, because our greenways are important and we need to make sure that we are evaluating those to know where our priorities are as far as our maintenance dollars go to. And so we worked with the same firm that evaluated our streets, conditions, also evaluated our greenways. And so we are taking that information and now building maintenance activities off of that information that's been provided by that consultant. So let's switch over and kind of look at some challenges and opportunities that our department are facing and continue to face moving into the future. First and foremost is our continued challenge to recruit frontline positions due to market conditions. It's hard to identify staff to come in entry level positions. And so I think it's important for us to make sure that we pay attention to that and that's going to be a challenge for us as we work with HR. And it's like Brandon said in his presentation, we, we've got to think outside of the box. We've got to get, you know, outside of our norm and figure out what we can do different to get people to come to the town of Morrisville. Supply chain issues continue to be an issue. We try to stay ahead of that as best we can, but you know, still there are times on certain things that we get caught up on a delay in materials getting here for certain things because of supply chain issues. And hopefully that'll get better as time progresses, but you know, it's still a challenge on some aspects. And another thing that we're having a challenge with is getting replacement vehicles ordered. The manufacturers are limiting their ordering windows as far as when we can actually place an order for replacement vehicles, because they're focusing more on supplying the demand for commercial and outside of government. So they're limiting the amount of vehicles that they're making for governments and so they have short windows of ordering those vehicles. So we have to make sure that we stay ahead of that and be aware that we're going to have delays in getting vehicles and account for that delay as we try to program replacements. Current initiatives, again, I said I've already addressed the resurfacing, we've already accomplished that for this current fiscal year. Safety upgrades, we looking at putting a fence along our Northwest Park, that's currently underway. Pedestrian bridges, we are, had an evaluation done last year as far as deficiencies that were noted and those are nearing completion as far as having those corrected. And our ADA transition plan is wrapping up. We will be bringing that item to council next month as far as our ADA transition plan. We're moving forward from a sustainability standpoint on facility energy audits. We have eight of our facilities that we are currently getting ready to embark on and that's going to help us with our reducing our energy costs throughout the town. Trash can replacements, we're about two-thirds done with that replacement process of the parks and greenways. Building maintenance, we had certain projects that were identified for FY23. Most of those projects are nearly completed. We have a couple of things left at Fire Station Number Two we're working on. Building automation systems, VAS, we currently have that in our PSMS building and right now we're working on Historic Christian Church and the Connector Building. We anticipate having those done within the next 30 to 45 days and then we'll be moving forward with our MAS C building. As far as fleets, again, we're looking, you know, again, trying to figure out what best way, strategy for replacements and also updating our policy far as fleet vehicles and replacement and that timing of when we replace vehicles. And we're also focusing on improving our cricket facilities and enhance maintenance at that facility to have the greatest cricket pitch and facility that we can have in the United States is our goal. Looking ahead to 2024 and beyond, what do we see as things we need to focus on? Obviously the addition of new facilities as they come on, you know, we have Fire Station Three, MCP Phase Three, we've talked about Town Green and also expansion of Church Street Park and Crabtree Nature Park, you know, additional landscape maintenance, you know, as roads get added, you know, enhancing those. ADA implementation, we'll be talking about that again next month, but you know, we've had our sidewalks evaluated, so we have curb ramps we have to focus on and obstructions in the sidewalk and then also vertical height displacement. And then we're working, as we said already, towards staff retention and recruitment, what we can do differently, working with HR on having our physicians pay study for FY24 and then career development plan for our staff. Facts and figures, you know, just kind of highlight a couple of things. Facility maintenance, I just, you know, put it out there because as, obviously as older our vehicles, I mean, our facilities get, the more money it takes to maintain them, just like your car, the older your car, the more money it takes for maintenance. Solar PSMS, you know, we have reduced energy costs there by about 50%. Litter collection, we continue to address that, you know, that's, that's in addition to what our landscape contractor does. They pick up litter before they mow, but this is also just a company that focuses on litter collection. Our recycling has increased, facility work orders have increased. And again, that goes to just reflect on age of our facilities and our PCI rating for our streets remains to be in very good condition. So our people is our greatest asset and so I wanted to highlight some of those. We had three employees that were recognized at our employee celebration of service back in October and they were nominated by other departments, by staff that recognized the work that they do. Bob Schu, our street maintenance supervisor, retired at the end of November. And then Cameron Gonzalez, welcome, is first born in December. So thank you and I'll try my very best to answer any questions you may have.
I love how you put a baby in there to soften us up. Mayor Protam Johnson?
Well, this is from before, sorry.
Oh, okay. I have a couple of comments and I'll recognize Councilmember Ralph. I love the fact that you joined up, Greenway Pavement Conditions. You guys already did a great job making all the bridges so they don't have the bumps at the bridge, that's really positive. So great work. The trash can and recycle, having those together all around the parks, great movement of the locations. They really make a lot of sense, right at the entrance of the trail. So you guys are doing a great job being really customer facing. When I go to the parks, I see the, everything being mowed, everyone, they're really friendly, very approachable. So you are also customer facing, which is wonderful. So you're doing a great job there. For FY24 and beyond, I see lots of good initiatives. Are you working towards ways to have metrics around them so you can sort of, what does success look like? So if there's some way to add measurements to those, that'd be really helpful to show how successful you are as you do those. So that's just something I'd love to see for next year if possible.
Yes, sir. We certainly can work toward that.
Okay. Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Excellent presentation. I guess one question I had is, I always see the Public Works folks working so hard around the cricket pitch and maintaining the cricket park. Is that an area where we potentially may need more resources in terms of just all the things going on in cricket, maintenance?
Yes, sir. As, as we move forward, we're expanding the cricket pitches, putting the practice pitches at Church Street Park now and the parking lot as part of that project. So as we move forward, expanding, you know, the facilities, you know, it will take more resources to make sure that we can adequately maintain them to the level that we do now.
Yeah, because I've noticed that it's a limited staff when we're even just getting ready for the games that we have now. And so that may be something that we look at. I've just observed that, have watched that, but thank you. Great, great job.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Garamella.
Yeah, I have a few questions. First, which building automation system are you guys using? Is it the same in every building?
Yes, ma'am, it's the same in every building. It's a Tritium platform, but we keep it consistent for that very reason. So we don't have to, you know, we've worked with IT to get a facility, identify a system that we both feel comfortable with and so we can keep it the same in every facility.
What did you say it was?
Tritium is the platform.
Okay. All right. And the landscape enhancements that you've made throughout the town, exactly what have you all been doing?
This past year, since I've been here, in the fall, we've worked on Cedar Fork District Park. We had trees that were removed. We had to improve some drainage swells there. We had a drainage culvert underneath the greenway that had to be replaced. It had a reversed grade on it, so it was holding water in the park. And then we, you know, just enhanced some planning, you know, annuals into our landscaping at various parks and tree ways and our greenways.
Okay. What was the other? Oh, the, for the fleet replacements, policy update, in what way are you going to be updating that policy?
Basically, the study really looked at how often we were replacing vehicles, you know, you know, did we need to adjust those timelines based on mileage, based on age? So we'll be adjusting some of those parameters and, you know, as far as recommendations, you know, that we look at, you know, once a vehicle becomes eligible for replacement. So that's what we're adjusting on those. And also we will be making sure that we include electric and hybrid options as part of that fleet policy. So we'll evaluate. So we'll evaluate that. So, you know, if a vehicle can be purchased that is a hybrid or electric or truly electric at some point in time, then that's what we want to make sure we have that written into the policy for evaluation when we look at identifying what type of vehicle we are going to replace.
Okay. And then last question. See, I'm going to try to get you over your 12 minutes.
Thank you.
And so this question, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I am curious about how your Public Works Department handles all the cigarette butts that end up in the parks. It's kind of a, council knows that's a little bit of a pet peeve of mine, but, I mean, especially in Church Street Park, what is your, what does your department do just as standard practice?
I mean, they do litter collection in the parks, so, I mean, they pick them up as they see them, but, you know, it's unfortunate that users of our parks do not dispose of their trash where it should be. And we do the very best we can with the resources that we have to make sure that, you know, we always try to pick up litter before we mow, so it doesn't spread it.
Okay. So how often are you, are they going out there or are they having to go out there?
They're out there on a weekly basis.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And to some parts, they're visiting multiple times throughout the week.
All right. I don't, well, I'm going to beat a dead horse in the ground, but, so, I mean, have you guys, is there any sort of, any sort of initiative that other municipalities are doing to help prevent the?
Yeah, if I could jump in. Brandon's working on town code of ordinances that you're going to be seeing in the next several meetings that's going to address some of this as well. That conversation's going to continue through some of our code of ordinance stuff.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know staff put up some signs also, and that helps in those particular areas. Councilmember Garamella, followed by Mayor Pretam Johnson.
Yeah, my main question is regarding the trash collection, you know, and the RFID. It's been a long time I have not seen any data from that RF chip, like, you know, how much trash collection, like, you know, for recycling versus trash. Is there any data that we can look at? Because, you know, I know recycling trash, the costs are going up, so that is something I would like to see at a future, you know, if you can email us, like, what's the current trend right now? Because we have seen, like, three years ago, the trend. After that, I've not seen anything after that.
We can certainly provide some data moving forward. I will say that recycling costs are going up, and, you know, it used to be where you can make a little money off recycling. Now it's costing organizations for recycling. You used to get a rebate back from GFL for recycling, now they're charging us to, you know, for the recycling as far as recycling collection.
Yeah, yeah, that is, I get the money part, but in theory, I wanted to see how Mooresville is really working on the recycling part of it, because RFID will give the true representation across the town, you know? That way, you know, we can do data-driven decisions on how to address the trash fee and all those things. So that's something I would love in the future if you could.
Yeah, I will say, you know, noted on our highlights or facts and figures, recycling has increased, and it continues to, people of residents within the town participating in recycling. So that continues to go up, which is a great thing. But so we can provide specifics on that moving forward.
Thank you.
Mayor Pretam Johnson.
So Jeff, you don't have to respond to this, but I'm going to keep saying this. The trash cans, instead of saying trash, I would love one day that they say landfill, so everyone knows that whatever they put in that, that bin goes to landfill versus things they can recycle. So don't have to respond to that. I'm just, it's a pet peeve of mine. I'm not sure you've heard me say that, as long as we're talking about pet peeves. Anyhow, I did want to ask too about the ADA transition plan. When you bring that to us, does that come to us in February, February, March?
Yes, one of those.
February 28th.
Okay, good, thank you. And in that, are you going to give us some example, or not examples, you're going to give us some priorities as to what facilities we should look at first? Is that the?
Well, the ADA transition plan, well, the first thing we had evaluated was our ride away. So basically, it was our sidewalks. So that was our first step in developing a comprehensive ADA transition plan. So we'll focus on our rideaways and sidewalks, then we'll be moving into having our facilities evaluated in the future, at future date.
Okay, and you're already doing some of that work, though. We've seen that, I've seen that. You've already done some work on the sidewalks.
Well, we address handicap ramps and ADA ramps when we do resurfacing, but as far as having the entire amount of sidewalk that the town maintains, so we maintain sidewalks along NC DOT roads as well, that's our responsibility, and we also have sidewalks along town maintained roads. So we had that evaluated, and so those deficiencies have been noted, and we'll be working on developing, formalizing a plan to address those deficiencies moving forward.
Okay, okay, good. I'm looking forward to that. And then just last, say thank you. Your department is everywhere. I see them when I go walking. Obviously, we see them at events. They're there supporting everything we do, so, you know, extend our thanks to this fabulous group of men and women that make the town look fabulous.
Thank you so much. And I will address your comment about the trash cans. We are putting a sticker on them that says, about speaks of going to the landfill. So that is being placed on every, decals placed on every lid of every trash can.
Thank you. And I will tell you, and I say that, and they've heard me say this before, the first time that I, it was a couple of years ago, that I saw a trash can like that, it really made me stop. It made me stop and think. So I think that's the idea, and the more we do that, I think is better for all of us. Make us all stop and think.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We all had a chance, but I'm holding you for another moment. Councilmember Fender had a follow-up.
One more question. Vertical height displacements, what does that mean?
That means where you have two pieces of sidewalk that come together and one that's shifted up.
Okay.
And it could be from roots, it could be from various things.
All right.
But that's what the vertical displacements are.
All right. Thank you.
And will you be doing those on sidewalks every year, or is it every couple of years you do that?
We have evaluated them and looked at them, and so we'll be making those improvements. You know, there's quite a few that have been identified, so we'll have to program them over the foreseeable future to make, but we'll, you know, come back, you know, once that's done and, you know, evaluate them periodically to ensure that there's any other more deficiencies noted, then we'll get us corrected.
So that's a rolling thing, not just once a year?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Thank you. Very helpful. Councilmember Garamella, did you have another follow-up? Okay. I'm sorry, we kept you a little bit longer than expected, but we appreciate your-
You're quite welcome.
Answering all the questions.
It's been an honor. And I will say before I leave, I want to thank the budget staff, especially Dawn, who's our budget buddy. She was a tremendous asset in helping prepare our presentation tonight as well.
Well, everyone should have a budget buddy, for sure.
Public Works has the largest, most complicated budget, so kudos to all of them, and you got two pet peeves out of this, so congratulations.
You're winning.
All right, our next new kid on the block, Mary Fawcett, who is overseeing our Parks and Recreation Department, 90 days plus. So she's also gotten a drink from the fire hose on this budget process for a pretty complicated budget. Go ahead, Mary.
Actually, can we hold for just a second until we all get to the spot?
I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
It's a neck-
Should be right after Public Works.
It's right after Public Works.
Oh, I started at the beginning again. That's my bad. Okay, I got it. Everyone set? Okay.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. Throughout my presentation, it's my intention to convey the numerous impacts made by Mooresville's parks, recreation and cultural resources professionals by providing a broad overview of the department's highlighting our successes while recognizing our opportunities, spotlighting current initiatives, projects and figures. I will conclude by looking ahead to our future needs and interests. It is the role of a park professional to plan, implement and evaluate the services presented to meet the demands and desires of the residents for recreational leisure activities. The Parks Department is comprised of five divisions. We are in an accredited department. Accreditation is a distinguishing mark of excellence that affords external recognition of an organization's commitment to quality and improvement. Accreditation has two fundamental purposes: to assure quality and improvement. There are 196 accredited departments across the United States, and there are 14 in North Carolina, a huge honor for Mooresville's Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources. In my four months as Mooresville's Inner Own Parts, Recreation and Cultural Resources Director, I can attest to the high caliber of our parks professionals. We are very well-suited and positioned that our team is serving the residents the best that they can on a daily basis. All right, as we look to highlight what we have benefited and presented over the past year, on September 14th, esports enhance the STEM offerings in a partnership was initiated with Wake Tech Community College. The esports arena is open to the public on Mondays and Wednesdays from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. On September 24th, the International Festival engaged 1,500 festival goers on Town Hall Drive where they were entertained by five bands, dance groups, artisans and cultural groups. In December, the innovators and creators at MAFC connected with the North Pole and got the jolly old man himself, Santa, to come to town, and he swam with 150 of our children at her Swim With Santa event, and the kids went up and had last-minute requests. The Mooresville Senior Center is a hub for playing bingo, catching a stretch class and gaining valuable resource, information while building community. On December 13th, at a luncheon sponsored by the Mooresville Rotary Club, we had the largest single senior attendance with 48. And then on December 22nd, Cultural Resources presented the menorah lighting. Although the weather forecast was pretty bleak, the town turned out, the lights glowed and the crowd gathered at Indian Creek Trailhead. Whoops, excuse me. It is a balance to meet the community's growing demands through programs and delivering on what meets the needs of our residents. We work to overcome staffing challenges while maintaining premier facilities and offering a variety of programs. We conduct community surveys, analyze program evaluations and reach to expand what we have to offer. We strive to be competitive in the market while providing recreational leisure services at affordable rates. We have our finger on the pulse for what is up and coming in our industry while evaluating trends and evaluating market rates. Our staff is a team that works together, covers shifts for one another, come in on holidays and work year-round to create the experiences that you expect and our residents have come to experience. We are nimble and are mindful of leveraging each other's strengths and to be good stewards of allocated funds. Hiring challenges exist and are discussed collectively. Recruiting strategies are shared. We keep encouraging one another and give recognition to our part-time staff, for without them, we cannot produce the level of service that is provided. Our staff works while others play. We create a sense of place in the spaces where we recreate. Parks professionals are out-of-the-box thinkers, analytical at times and playmakers. Play is what we hope organically is created when a family steps out of their car at MCP. We work hard behind the scenes to provide services and fill niches. Highlighted here is the esports arena, the Swim With Santa, whoops, I'm sorry, I did not have this updated presentation, the disc golf, so I had the Swim With Santa, but the temporary disc golf course and the purchase of our fitness equipment. Each year, we strive to increase our participation numbers, and at MAFC, we crested at 3,000 this year. We're hoping that we can push to 3,500 in the coming months, maybe by the end of the year. We just recently filled a vacancy of our marketing and membership person, so it's unrealized currently where we will go, but we're striving to continue to push beyond that mark. The staff is working to level set where the demands are and how we can set and achieve goals. Community intercepts where there is a pride and where you live. We are striving to continue to develop that sense of space and place at each and every one of our facilities. Our current project speaks to the town's logo, live connected, live well. Our existing facilities are receiving upgrades while even newer parks like Church Street are being expanded and newer opportunities are being developed and brought to fruition. These projects meet the needs of emerging interests of residents. For example, the Franklin Church Senior Dog Park meets the realized needs to have a dedicated space to exercise with your fur baby. We continue to evaluate and team up with engineering to explore residents' requests while connecting back to our park master plan and look forward to what is yet to come and meet the community's needs through tangible amenities the projects bring to our parks. This demonstrates reinvestment of our existing assets and the continual opportunity of evolving and exploring option for expanded uses at MCP Shallow and Crabtree Creek Nature Park. The outcome park professionals are seeking is to make an impact on young people, to connect with teens, to have a shared experience with families, to enhance senior adults' leisure activities. Statistics are a measure of what we're trying to do on a daily basis. As you look at this slide, I think it will be no surprise that we've been able to increase across the board in our programming as we've moved away from COVID. And we've been able to reconvene of in-class programming, we've been able to go on senior trips, we've had group exercise. So I hope that it's no surprise that we've increased for senior programming. We've had overwhelming success with our CFCC, our athletics has been an increase, and then as I've already mentioned with MAFC, with our memberships and our total visits to date of 90,000. And then new, as we recognized at the beginning of the year with cultural programming with the hiring of Leslie Haney, this is a cumulative estimate of how many participated at our events of almost 6,000. As we turn and we look ahead, I'm tipping my hat to this team of park professionals as they are leading the way creating community and providing the opportunity for play, leisure activities, youth programming and so much more. Let it be known that we're striving to have all the residents of Mooresville experience the benefits of Mooresville's Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources has to offer. It will continue to be felt as our projects lift and ribbons are cut and celebrations are held. We will continue to analyze and seek the roadmap that is necessary to keep us above an industry standard and competitive at a market rate for hiring. We seek to align the demand for improving health and wellness by pacing alongside residents and ask for the necessary staff, operational support and uphold the compliance set forth by the Commission for Accreditation of Parks and Recreation Agencies. Thank you, mayor, council members, for the fiscal support of me and my staff to execute daily fun, play and to create that place, a sense of place for all of the residents of Mooresville. Thank you.
Excellent. You guys are very customer-facing.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Is the Fuss Dog Park, is that set in stone, or is that something that we're going to be looking at?
Say that again.
Just the name Fuss Dog Park? Is that just a shortcut for now, or are we going to be looking at that as the name going forward?
That has, that has not, we have not established that.
Okay. There's a lot of innovation in your department as well, lots of different programs, new things coming out. I think Jerry Allen's doing a great job with the Senior Center with Chihuana, lots of great activities there all the time, very busy.
Absolutely.
So kudos to everything you've been doing in the very short time that you've been here.
Thank you.
Lots of great improvements. Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Ralph.
Yeah, I've really been pleased by, I've felt that we've really leveled up the cultural programming aspect of the department, and I've really been happy about that. Can you just give me an idea of what other things you might be planning along those lines?
So there's been discussion of Elektra Series, there's been discussion of an opportunity with MLK Day, there's also been discussion about recognizing the LGBTQ plus community through a pride celebration. The creative thought process is expanding also on current existing events with Duale and then with the International Festival. Leslie is connecting with the Chamber of Commerce, still looking to see how we can force a partnership there as well.
All right, that's great. I'm 100% in favor of all of that.
Great. I will share that with her.
No pet peeves here. Thank you.
Councilmember Ralph.
Yeah, great presentation, and I work at the MFC about seven, six days a week, and so I can't, I just, the level of professionalism there is unbelievable. And in fact, I'm so, I've been swimming every day, but with the pool closing, I couldn't find a pool where the staff was so accommodating and friendly, so I'm going to take three weeks off of swimming because I couldn't find, of course, I'm a little bit biased, but thank you for that. I guess you already answered my questions about MLK Day. I definitely think we need to do something just based on, I attended a lot of events and I think part of it could be partnering with some of the MLK committees that already exist, like Triangle MLK or Holly Springs or even Apex, who expressed some interest of working with us to do something in Mooresville, which I think would be great. I guess my question, and maybe it's just a suggestion, is I think that the one opportunity that we could have to accelerate the revenue that we bring into the center is- that we could have to accelerate the revenue that we bring into the center is more partnerships with the companies in the area, because as healthcare costs continue to rise, we could basically have the M A F C in wellness programs. And I know we've been talking about that, but I think that would be really great to get like more corporations in the area who don't have their own gyms, who want to, you know, basically just have a place to workout, and so that, you know, maybe these efforts are already going underway, but I think that's a huge opportunity for us with Mooresville's location and all the companies in Mooresville, so.
Yes, thank you. Well, thank you for taking your opportunity to do your exercising at M A F C. Kendall would not like hearing that you're going to take three weeks off, she encourages the dry land workout.
Three weeks off of swimming.
And to your point, yes, Brandon has talked with me and then with Kendall, and now with the feeling of the marketing and membership position, we're looking towards what those corporate opportunities are.
That would be going after the corporations, and maybe even getting like, final question, could we get like, like corporate banners, you know, people like would, you know, pay and get, you know, we get the revenue and then they get certain memberships, I mean, that's how I'm looking at it as well, right?
We'll explore options.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, not seeing anything else. When M A F C came online, there's talk about using a lot of data and collecting a lot of data, and you've shown the memberships are going up, everything's recouping. Is there any other opportunities to use data, or what will success look like when you come before us next year?
So other opportunities with data is to look to see, where's the desired Group X classes, for example, and can we replicate to continue, like if there's just the class on a Tuesday and Thursday, what would it look like if we added a Saturday? So expanding where there's already a high interest, and so that can continue to stimulate revenue, looking at expanding Learn to Swim programs, looking at what opportunities are with our tennis now that the new courts are coming on at MCP, which is a little bit of a stretch with M A F C, but Travis oversees the tennis functionality there at M A F C. So there are opportunities, you know, mention of the corporate membership opportunities. So four months in, I'm trying to go for Rookie of the Year, but I haven't, you know, crossed the year yet, so I'll look forward to coming before you guys next year and seeing where we were this year and where we've grown for next year.
Okay. Did you have another follow-up, Councilmember Ralph?
A question, I guess, if we have suggestions of things that we would like, what's the, I want to ask the administration, what would be the best process? There's two things, I don't want to make it like specific.
Why don't you make notes and we'll capture them after the presentations in your slides?
Okay.
We'll be together all weekend, we'll have plenty of time to talk.
So we can make suggestions, because I don't want to make it like, I've got some specific things.
Thank you.
I think you know what.
You finished early, congratulations.
Rookie, Rookie of the Year! Or of the night, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
All right, returning to finance, Nancy is unable to be here, but we have a great pinch hitter. Casey's like me, she's subbing in at the 10th hour. Casey's our controller, you may have seen her for the first time at our employee event just a couple of weeks ago. Thank you, Casey.
So we go towards the front to find finance? We're trying to?
Yes.
Towards the very front, or?
No, I've got it sort of in the middle.
Okay.
It's right after IT.
That's helpful.
Keep us on our toes, that we're like, making sure you pay an attention.
We did want to mess with your heads a little bit.
Which I always appreciate, don't get me wrong, but.
We just want to give you total attention. Okay, everybody good? I thought it was last. It's all yours.
So I'll start with our finance mission statement. We provide excellent financial services to the organization and community through accountability and transparency. We value our teamwork, fairness, communication, competence, integrity, adaptability, and respect. Our department is an integral part of the town of Mooresville's daily operations and long-term projects and serves as the foundation for the town's various services. The role of Finance Department is to ensure effective management and financial integrity of the town's programs, activities, and resources. Our team is absolutely amazing. This group holds a wealth of knowledge, experience in government finance, and their attention to detail and ability to work together to solve problems and get the job done is fantastic. This is honestly one of the best groups I've ever worked with in finance. The town of Mooresville has received the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for 28 consecutive years. This award is indicative of the town's commitment to maintain our strong financial position and fiscal strength, and its highest form and recognition for excellence in state and local government financial reporting. We have two members in our department that hold the Certified Local Government Purchasing Officer Certification, and one who holds a Certified Financial Officer Certification. Both of these require classroom work, exams, professional experience in their field. The town of Mooresville maintains, obtains bond ratings from all three agencies. Because of the costs associated with the rating process, not all municipalities do this. In Wake County, the town of Mooresville is the smallest AAA-rated municipality. Our Financial Systems Manager and Controller are working to implement the ACFR Statement Builder Module. This will streamline the development of our annual financial statements. This is a huge project for us. The FSM is also working to implement the Advanced Schedular Module, and it will simplify complex police and fire and parks and recreation staff schedules so that we can maximize our labor, or minimize our labor costs and overtime expenses. The Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASB, has issued several new statements in the last few years. GASB 87 was successfully implemented in fiscal year 22 regarding how we must report lease information in our ACFR, and now staff are working to implement GASB 96. We've been working closely with our IT because this statement addresses software as a service and how our town's right to use that asset and associated liabilities, budgeting and reporting have to be shown on our financial statements. This implementation, like GASB 87, will be a major lift. The new controller, me, was hired in August of '22. I hit the ground running and have been drinking from a fire hose since I started. This team, we've worked really well together, and we are working to make our department even better. Finance recognizes the need for regular training for better compliance with town policies. Each month, we are addressing a specific topic and take the challenges our departments are facing to take as suggestions as we tweak our policies for the future. Finance is dedicated to continually improving the efficiencies of our ERP and our ERP enhancements while maintaining our data integrity and transparency. Our geo-bond issuance is a team effort with Finance doing the quarterbacking, and we're currently working with Davenport, our financial advisors, to prepare for our next issuance. We know we need to prepare for our annual audit each year, which includes the preparation of the ACFR. This initiative requires a significant amount of staff time each year to complete. It's an all-hands-on-deck. Every member of our department plays a role in preparing this document, and it is extremely time-consuming. GASB 96 will be implemented this year, and other statements are coming. GASB 94, GASB 100, and GASB 101, our auditors spoke to that when we did our audit presentation. We also have staff in our department that are nearing retirement age, and we want to focus on succession planning. We continually update our how-to processes and documentation and work with each other as we file various products, various reports for state and federal reporting, so we're Our financial transactions to continue to grow as our organization and community grow. We've been able to successfully sell our surplus this year, which was put on hold some during COVID. This allows us to get the most value out of our items that we're replacing and not stop-calling them. The debt ratio is holding below the town policy limit of 15%. This is something that our credit rating agencies look at. The credit rating agencies also provide the town with an annual report regarding their assessment of the town's financial position. The ACFR is a valuable tool regarding how they make their determination. The Management Discussion and Analysis, or MDNA, is, in particular, includes information regarding our economic development, transportation enhancements, capital project initiatives, town accolades, and a recap of the town's financial activities. I thank you for the opportunity to showcase the Finance Department. Nancy was really wanting to be here, this is her favorite thing to do. We work quietly behind the scenes in supporting, in a supporting role, but perform a vital function ensuring excellent financial services through accountability and transparency, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, you talk about transparency, will any of this be on the dashboard going forward, do you think?
When you say "this," what do you mean?
Anything that you think would be appropriate to have the public seeing more directly, other than our quarterly reports that come to us.
Our quarterly reports are out there as well, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. Our quarterly reports are, any comprehensive financial report is out there.
Yeah, budget, all of those financial reports are out there. You're looking for what, transaction data?
I'm not sure, just looking for what's the next step towards more transparency, because you mentioned it, so, just something to think about.
That's something our Finance and IT department can collaborate on.
Okay, because I'm hoping that you're going to get the GFOA award again, keep that streak going, but like what would success look like next year? What would this presentation, how would it be different? Is there lots of innovation in your space, I guess?
So one of the major innovations that we are doing is bringing this ACFR builder online, the Financial Services Manager and myself, that is going to take our financial software, and right now, when we create all of our financial statements, we print reports out, and then we have to hard-key that data into spreadsheets in Excel. So it's going to take our trial balance straight from the system and put it in the format that we're looking at to prepare for you guys. So that will give us more time to do some analytics on the information and not be so rushed to get a product by October 31st.
Wonderful, great. Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, please.
I have to turn on my mic because it was off so that you wouldn't hear my papers refilling and everything. I really appreciate you taking the time to share with us the complexity associated with the regulatory standards that have been shifting and making municipalities realign a lot of their ways of working. So the ACFR is really an improvement to take you out of Excel and allow you to have a more robust data repository that will allow for filings and analytics and a lot of other power tools, is that correct? Great. With the ERP system, which has been implemented now for some time, and the ACFR, is that improving your efficiencies and giving you time to actually look at insights and identify trends? Because I see that not as just in efficiency, but it allows you to do all those things that you wanted to do, but you never could because you didn't have the time?
Yes, I will say our Financial Systems Manager has been phenomenal, and she and I worked together at a previous location. So when we were looking at something that's challenging our department, say approvals, you know, why am I having to check off on this twice? We're looking at our workflow, how can we make it more efficient? And we take that input from our users, like, on a regular basis. How can we make it more efficient but maintain our internal controls? Because we want to make sure we check all the boxes.
Exactly. Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing nothing else here, Mayor Protime-Johnson.
Just Casey, thank you, that was a great presentation. Thank you for pitching, and for Nancy, and tell her we miss her too. I'm sure she, she does love to come before us, I don't know, I'm not.
She'd be full of emotion by now.
Yes, yes she would, and I'd be teary too. So anyhow, I want to say thank you, congratulations on 28 years, not surprised, and I know it'll be 29, and it'll be 30, but thank you for helping us keep our AAA rating as well. And we all know how critically important that is to the work that we do all year-round, and I know your department's not the only one that helps us and keeps us on track with AAA ratings. I think we all have a hand in that, are making sure that that happens, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, Casey. We're at the end of Part One, is that correct?
Nope, got two more.
Okay.
Two more.
Lori Shedlick, HR is going to come up and speak next.
Good evening, I'm glad to get this opportunity again to talk with everyone. First and foremost, I do want to show you my phenomenal staff. The remarkable thing about our staff is the tenure, really unheard of in these days, and we have our new addition, I'll call her New, she's been here a year, April. If you haven't met her, I hope you'll meet her soon. Difficult, I would say, sometimes to come into a group that's been together as long as we've been together, but credit to my team and credit to April that it's been really a seamless addition, and she's just been a great addition to our team. Some of our highlights, major work, you've heard this over and over again, recruitment, 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 fewer applicants, and those applicants have multiple offers. So we're in a really tough market, and that's not news, I'm sure, to any of you. Wellness and mental health has been a big focus this year for our staff, and organizational and employee development, succession planning continues. So that's a work in progress from last year into this year, and will go into the following year. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion is also another effort that is ongoing, you heard that from administration, senior management, and that's something that also, of course, is an HR initiative as well. As we strive to stay market-competitive, the items that you see here are really what helps us to do so. We want individuals to know that Mooresville is a great place to work and to come to, and also to stay. We restarted our supervisor training since COVID, we feel like it's really important to do that in person as much as we can, so we've refreshed it, restarting it, want to make sure it's relevant to today's supervisors and our supervisors here at the town. Recruitment and retention, again, is a big, big area. We advertise our flexible work schedules, our market adjustments to stay market-competitive, we have a paid parental leave, as you know, 5% 401K contribution, all those things help to differentiate us, and those are the things that we want to advertise. We are, again, employee wellness is a big initiative, we're aware, burnout is a big thing. When staffs are lean, burnout can happen, and so paying attention to mental health is really important of our staff. Looking ahead, again, continuing on in succession planning, diversity, equity, and inclusion, we started this year with, right from the start with employees, we introduced at launch at our new employee orientation, the idea of microaggressions, implicit bias, and simple tools that we expect them to use, and the groups that they're coming in to utilize as well. So we want to get started right off from the, from the start with employees with that. We're starting now in our health insurance renewals, and that'll go on for the next month or so, working on that, and we are looking at our HR programs, I mentioned wellness, and just sort of looking at the challenges of our workforce and the things that they're dealing with, and being a support for them and offering programs that will help them, EAP in particular. Facts and figures, you see, you know, recruitment's again, as tough as it has been, in the last two and a half years, we have filled 108 positions. That's not just, so that's half the staff, basically, that's not just an HR obvious workload, that's everybody here that is incorporating and acclimating new staff while major projects, major, major projects are going on, incorporating them in the culture, they're learning new systems, it's, it takes everyone here and everyone behind them to have that happen really as seamlessly as it might appear. That takes a lot of work behind the scenes to make that happen. I mentioned wellness, we're steady with our participation in wellness, our turnover is starting to trend down, I don't want to give any false hope, I mean, we're still in a tough market, and that's just the truth of it. We are maintaining our tenure, I'm glad to see that at five years, that says a lot of the things that we're doing are working, and so that's, that's a good sign. Just to close this out, Mooresville is a special place, we have smart, well-trained, committed staff, and we care about the work, and we care about each other, and it really hit home to me when I was talking recently to an employee who said, from the very beginning, we stood out, we look at, I think, sometimes- We, we look at, I think, sometimes all the things that we can do, and there's lots that we can do to retain staff, but we sometimes forget, it's that initial personal touch. And that employee said, that was the difference to him in that conversation from the very beginning. It happened to be Nate Mayer. I would tell you, I think if it was anybody on my staff, it would be the same. That made the difference. That, that caring about that person before he was even necessarily going to be an employee made a difference to the other employers that he was talking with. So, I think of a quote from Theodore Roosevelt, so I didn't create it. People don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. And I think that's a differentiator for us, and a really important one, and what I'm proud to remind myself and everyone else of. And I think that first touch, and then all the staff here that you see, just gets reinforced over and over, that we are a special place, and we want those applicants to feel that and want to be a part of Morrisville. And I hope we play some small part in that.
I think you play a big part.
Wow. I should, I should have ended with Lori.
You didn't need a baby picture. That was good.
Thank you. I feel strongly about this, so I hope it comes across. It's just, they're amazing. That's just the truth of it.
Oh, yeah, your team, I mean, showing that culture right at the start is important. You're mentioning the market is very challenging. You also said that when staffs run lean, that can lead to burnout. So, I would just like to ask, as we go into retreat, is part of that something that we can address by having more resources and not running as lean as a staff? So, that's just a thought, and that's not HR. That's, each department has to assess whether or not they're running a little bit too lean to be as effective and efficient and retaining as much. So, that's not really asking for an answer, it's more of a.
And that is another part of the retreat plan. We committed to that more long-range staff forecast as a part of last year's budget, and that is part of your discussions planned for this weekend.
Okay. Looking forward to that. Councilmember Robati, followed by Councilmember Garamella.
Lori, it doesn't surprise me one bit that you folded in a person one year ago seamlessly into your team. I feel like that's kind of your whole thing, you know? I think that, I do think you do a great job of driving culture through the whole organization. We all benefit from it. One thing that I did notice here in, I noticed in this presentation, but I did also notice in the others, is I don't know if everyone currently on staff uses gender normative pronouns. It might be, you know, just a, just a thought, just driving inclusion in a different way, might be to, you know, when presentations are gonna be public facing like this, to include people's pronouns. That's just a thought I had, but I, I mean, I think you're doing an amazing job. And like I said, every single one of you benefits from it.
Right. Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Rapp.
Lori, I want to echo, like, whatever you said, because your staff is excellent, and the care that they take, I've seen for me personally, and I've heard from other people. And I know you're in a tough market to recruit all the people, and then the people going and coming in. It's like, it's, it's a hard job, but, you know, keeping the sanity and keeping that care and the vision to keep our, you know, staff growing. I did not know till the last meeting we had with all the new employees, that, you know, when I joined, I was 115, you know, 120, and then it has grown, grown so much. But, you know, kudos to you and your team, because finally, it comes to HR and all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rapp?
Yeah, excellent job, as always. I guess my question is really just an observation. I think that, you know, we've continued to see the healthcare costs being a challenge, and I think we've made some progress. I think whatever we can do to continue to be innovative, keeping up with, you know, trends, partnerships, one thing that I've been researching on my own is kind of like, it's really for more larger metro cities, but they've been going to models where, you know, providers can come in and manage healthcare clinics for those cities and towns, and over time, they can see savings. Because typically, if you can go onsite closer to where you are, the chances of people getting more of their preventive healthcare. So, I don't know if that's something we could explore down the road, or perhaps doing more preventive screenings. The ones that we do are great. So, just wanted to throw that out there. I mean, you know, I think it's a challenge that a lot of the local governments face, just with the cost going up, so, something to think about.
And you may remember, we're part of the health insurance pool. We joined a few years ago, and that has helped us to get those costs somewhat predictable and stable, as we were hoping. And we were, we're looking at, at that time, double-digit, you know, increases, and we've been able to keep that much lower. So, that has proven out to be a good decision, and continues to be one at this point.
Right. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson, followed by Councilmember Fender.
So, thank you, Lori. Thank you for all you do. Thank you for being here tonight. I guess Brandon started off by talking a little, he mentioned the R and R, recruitment and retention. And then Casey brought up the word retirement, which always scares me when I hear somebody wants to retire. I want you all to stay here until you're like 95. But, but everybody deserves a good retirement, too. Everybody's deserving of that. But, so, and everybody's kind of talked about, a little bit about recruitment so far tonight. When, and maybe this is not, I'm not looking for an answer right here, right now, but when, when we talk about this, this paragraph you put together, and you talked about flexible work schedules and the 401K contribution, and actually, I do have a question about that, but what more can we do in this area, or can we do more in this area? Do we need to do more in this area? And would that be helpful to this, this issue that we're facing in retaining folks? And if so, what, and again, you don't have, but, you know, what are they, and what, what kind of out-of-the-box things have we not thought about? You know, we talked about flexible schedules. Not everybody in this organization can partake in that. So, what else can we do for them that they, that can't work from home, or, you know, shift their hours? So, that's just kind of a big, what can we do there?
Yeah, and, and I do, I, I talk with a number of the HR directors, you know, in the area, and we, you know, toss ideas around. I just went to TJ Cog seminar about recruitment and retention, and we're all kind of looking at options, whether it be, you know, bringing back a retiree potentially, we've done that some, you know, just looking at a variety of ways to recruit. And, I mean, the good news and the bad news is that we're all trying to do that, and, and our staff is very marketable, and they're being directly recruited. My own staff has had multiple direct recruitments, and that's just also the reality of it.
Right. Yeah, it's a brutal reality.
And so, that career pathing that we're talking about, too, career development, the succession planning, offering that challenging work, and employees that come in, and a high caliber of our staff, you know, have them seeing a path that they can stay here versus going someone else, somewhere else. You know, that, the reality is, sometimes you're getting people prepared for a job somewhere else, because we just don't have that position. But as we grow, the ability to create those career paths becomes something more possible in some of our departments. And we're definitely, there's an effort, as you probably heard tonight, to do some of that in some of those departments, too.
Okay. Okay. And thank you for that. And then the, the 401 contribution, are we competitive in that?
Yes.
Because I remember having that discussion a couple of years ago, and we increased it. So, I just want to make sure, are we still competitive in that? Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're required to do the 5% for law enforcement, and we, a number of years ago, matched it for our regular employees, non-law enforcement, at 5%. And it's a, it's a direct contribution, not a match. So, every employee that gets that 5%.
Not a match. I've never actually heard of that. That's really good, that it just happens no matter what. Councilmember Fender.
Two questions. One thing that Mayor Pro Tim said made me curious, the flexible scheduling, does that include working from home?
Yes. We're, we're on a hybrid schedule for positions that permit that, for up to two days a week.
Okay. Is there any, because my question was gonna be, has there been consideration for people that are able to, to work from home?
Yes.
Is there any thought that maybe more than two days a week?
We, we thought that through, and really for the collaboration and wanting to have some days where whole staffs are there together, that seemed to be the best sort of, of the options that we talked through at the time. We continue to evaluate, but that's, and that's what we've had for about the last year and a half, I would say.
Okay. Yeah, I, you know, I, I work from home, and for me, it's been beneficial, especially as a single mom. However, I do miss that interaction, so I think it does need to be a balance. And one other thing that came to mind, and I'm not even sure if this would be in the cards for Morrisville, but do we do any sort of tuition reimbursement?
We do.
Okay, good.
Yes, yeah.
All right. That's my questions then.
Okay. Councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, I know I already had a term, but I did want to talk about working at home, because I do think that working at home is, is a very underutilized, organizations that traditionally have not been work-at-harm organizations. And if anything taught us anything, it's that we can collaborate, we can, we can be productive, we can do a lot of jobs from home that we never had seriously considered. And I, like Don, I work from home every day. I'm five minutes from Cisco. I do not go there. And I don't, you know, it doesn't affect my productivity, it doesn't affect my, it doesn't affect my sense of connection to my team. And I just think that, as an employer, that's, that's such a huge benefit. I've, I've often said, that's a benefit that will make me, will make Cisco have to dynamite me out of my desk. So, you know, just, I mean, in a market that's so competitive, where it's so hard to find people and retain them, I, I really do think that that's, you know, that's just something worth consideration, even at, at a greater extent than we do now.
Yeah, in municipal government, I would say that in a number, closer here for us, we're probably more in common with doing a hybrid. The further out, it's much more 100% back in office. So, to be competitive right now, the hybrid is what a lot of our surrounding municipalities are, for positions that can do it. But, I hear you.
Okay. So, this discussion reminded me of a quote, "Train people so that they can leave, treat them well enough that they want to stay." And I think we're doing both of those things. If you need me to ask Frank to draft a letter to the other mayors to warn them off of our staff, you just have to let us know.
Hey, if you, if you can do that, great.
Okay. I'll take that under advisement. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Our last presentation of the first half is Will Glenn with our Communications Department.
Okay. That's just the next one in our packet, so that's easy.
Thank you, Martha. I bring greens from the Communications Department. I'm Will Glenn, the Communications and Outreach Director. Oh, I forgot I'm driving. I'm looking at Eric over there.
You're driving.
This is in me, though.
Oh.
Hold my time. Time, I promise. All right, that's me. All right.
It went back. There you go.
All right. It's backward, I just want to wrong me. All right, sorry about that. So, I want to start here and take a moment to discuss my five-person team. I guess, first of all, I said this to you before. So, this five-person team, I guess just six years ago, was a one-person department handling communications. So, I say it to say that this is the result of smart planning and smart thinking by you all, and also our town manager and admin staff, just for prioritizing and seeing the importance of communication. It makes a difference to your organization. So, I'll also say that communications is one of, I guess, very few, or I say, a few departments that are really 24/7, where actually, we're available when needed, depends on what's happening at that time and at that day. All right, so you know my staff, but I'll mention them briefly here. Lynetta Anderson, to the far left. When you go to our great events, I guess, at least the signature events, she's the architect behind those, and she also, is also the liaison for Parks and Recreation Department. To her right is Maria Budgegall. She's fairly new, our new PIO. She actually handles the website and does the quarterly newsletter, and also our weekly e-newsletter. And she's also the primary contact for media. Next to her is Laura Golf, our social media coordinator. She's done a great job since she's been here, and she's really enhanced our social media platforms a lot, and our messaging that goes, that goes out every day. She does more than that. She does also handles projects that most of our staff does, outside of just doing social media. So, she's just not doing that. Our newest employee is Ms. Julia Walker, who started in December, who's doing a great job, our Community Relations Liaison. She's our liaison to the business community and also the HOAs, but she manages several other databases as well. She's hit the ground running. She's got our new HOA newsletter out already, that went out last week. All right. Highlights, I think it's been a good year. I've got to say that Morrisville 101 and Team 101, probably my favorite programs, and probably the Team 1. I just think they're valuable programs for, for interaction, for education and engagement. We've done some different things the last couple of times with Team 101. We've, we've changed the curriculum a little bit to sustainability this last time. And the key for the Team class, I would say, is to be hands-on and interactive with the students, the young people. We had them out in the creek this past session, doing water quality testing and those kind of things. And of course, both classes go visit fire and police and other departments. So, very good program. Also, I want to mention that it's important that we continue to develop and also support our recognitions under the town gains. This past year, we recognized as the number five best place to live for families of Fortune Well, and also the number one best place to live in North Carolina by Niche. And we have more than these, of course. There's an accolades page in the website where you can see some more recognitions there at your leisure. Special events. I just want to mention that our events continue to grow, I guess, even so much that it's kind of fallen over to the Influences, the Challenges column as well, being that we're trying to, of course, create ways to make sure we can accommodate all the folks that are coming out to our events, just making sure, I mean, either by design of the setup or by choosing different locations, that we're able to get all those folks in there. And of course, different locations have different pros and different cons. Also, I'll mention also an influence inside of our volume of information. I like to say it's a blessing and a curse. We have a myriad of content, I mean, just a lot of content to use, to get out on our platforms and our mediums. But at the same time, we have a lot of content, so we have to strategize and plan, when is the best time to get the content? Ten out, which is the best medium. We're trying to get it out concisely, accurately, and timely. So, I want you to know, we do have a plan, and that's being put into place daily. And lastly, one of our Influences or Challenges is just making sure our toolbox is current. We want to always make sure we're using the right tools, the right technology, the right mediums, connect with our residents, and ones that they will use connect back with us. So, those things that we're strategizing and trying to put in place, I would say, daily. Currently, we had a chance this past year to do some website enhancements, reformatting the 20 most visited pages on the website, also removing 300-plus unused documents that were clogging up the system, at the same time, putting in keywords, and all of this is helping our search function improve. I came before you all, I think in the fall and September, to discuss the community service. I won't spend much time there. I'll just say that it's important to continue to go back to our residents every few years to get their input on what we're doing and excel in, and to town, and things we can do better. And I want to spend a moment on Engage Morrisville. We are, our license expires this July, and we are currently evaluating the feasibility of that platform going forward. It may just be that technology isn't what we need at this time. But we did have a chance to do some successful engagement opportunities on that this year, including a COVID-19 Q and A session with the local doctor. We also able to do SBA, Business Forum, and some other things as well. Looking ahead, it is best practice every few years to kind of do a website refresh. So, that's on our radar as well, as also doing a, a brand standards refresh, as far as our branding on our poles, our signing across town. So, we're looking at all those things going forward, and always looking at how we're engaging with our residents. And we know that two-way engagement is valued. We had a event, an idea last fall, combining our engagement with our events. We have so many events that we're still creating, I think it was a Town Center Project Information Session. We had that combined with National Night Out. So, that put Information Session, we had that combined with National Night Out, so that put to be successful, so we're looking to do more of that going forward. All right, facts and figures. I do want to mention that our social media platforms continue to grow, continue to evolve, and our numbers are, for a community that's about 30,000 residents, our numbers are really high as far as enrollments, those are valuable tools to utilize to get information out. I also want to highlight one statistic from our website. On July 3rd, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., we experienced 33,000 website page views. Now, daily average is just over 4,000, so that's a one-day increase of 775%. So that tells us that when we have an event or programs, that our residents are going to our website or our social media pages. So we want to, on our end, make sure they're updated, and the right information is there for them to go and glean. All right, and that's all that I have. This last page, basically, is just essence of what we do, and the thing that stood out to me on this page is a lot of smiling faces at our events and programs, and I'll just say that behind those smiling faces, there's a lot of top-notch professionals in the Communications Department that's helping get things done, so I'll pause for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Councilmember Scruggins-Schelton, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions for tonight, but I will have more questions on my list at the retreat. Number one, I'm really excited about the website refresh. I'm not really clear on what the scope and boundaries are, because I have in my mind what would be a perfect website, but I think there's seven versions of that, at least here, and then there's others. But if the website could work with the town clerk and the document searching, that still seems to be a gap. Common things that I think people would look up are project information, town projects, budget information, meeting minutes, agendas, those kind of things, when you type in words, you get a lot of things you don't expect. So having those keyword searches would require alignment with the town clerk and how some of that storage is being done. The second is the town meeting streaming. It is very difficult, and I've heard this from many different people, to find the link on how to see the meetings. It's not on the front page, it is nested, and sometimes it's, you click here, people mostly go to the calendar. If you think about a meeting, you go to the calendar, you click on the calendar, and there's no link, no agenda. So if we could raise visibility and transparency of our government through making it simpler for people to see our meetings and access our documents going forward, I think that would be a huge win. The work that you've been doing as a department raising the profile of Morrisville, raising the awareness of the activities and the good things about our town is fabulous. I just see this as an opportunity in the documents and the website update, as a good thing that we can further advance.
Definitely, no, we can do some things to make it more prominent to find those links on the site.
Exactly, thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to just piggyback on what you just said about watching live streams of meetings. Is there anything that keeps us from putting on Twitter and Facebook at 6:00 p.m. on Tuesdays, "This is the link, join us now," and then?
So there's, yeah, there's a meeting, so we put an event on Facebook and Twitter before the, we're Facebook before the meeting. We could go as far as when it's starting live, it's not a big problem.
And then people could know, just go to social media, just click that link, and you don't have to search for anything, so that would be helping just to a solution, really.
Right, I think that's an "and," not an "or." So it's like having multiple ways to get to the same is a great suggestion.
Okay. I'm really curious about that July 3rd number. Was it because you just did a Facebook Live right then, do you think, or?
They were probably looking for fireworks information.
Okay, they're looking to arrive late.
We went social the entire day, so I mean, they driving folks there as well, so.
Okay, because that's really exciting, that so many people sort of were looking to join us. Is it too difficult to essentially livestream fireworks or some of our events? Because I know we don't really do that so much, but you do some Facebook Lives, which is similar.
Yeah, I would say it'd be a staffing issue, I mean, most staff are, we're working at the events. We do live segments of the event, but not the entire event itself, so.
Okay, I just love that so many people are looking to join us that day. Looking around, Mayor Pratim Johnson.
So, Will, I just have two questions. One is the welcome packet. I got to attend a senior advisory committee recently, and one of the things they talked about was a welcome packet, if we still gave one out, because they wanted to include their information, their senior programs in the welcome packet. And I honestly, I wasn't sure whether we still did one or not, and then the group didn't either, by the way. So what is the welcome packet, who does it go to, and what's included in it?
Yeah, so, good question. We're actually doing a reboot right now of the welcome packets, but they're still going out, it's going to new residents who come to the town. So we get about, I'd say 50 per month, so that's what's getting them at this point.
Okay, so how does anybody in the organization know that the welcome packet's going out so that they can include information?
They can contact Communications, myself, or Ms. Julia Walker, to send information our way.
Okay, 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 and then the other thing, the HOA newsletter, is that, tell me what that is, because I don't think I'm familiar with that, and can we get, can council get on that and be copied on that?
Definitely.
What exactly is that, and is it a generic, or is it specific?
It's specific to our HOAs, we utilize the community information that's going directly to them. We've had one that's going out so far, so we'll get you guys added on to that.
Okay, please, yeah, I think that would be, I would find that helpful, that to be included on communication that went out, because we, I think we're, I know I'm on the weekly email that goes out. I find that really helpful, to know for myself, and then for what the public is seeing too. So any kind of communication like that, if we can be copied, I think would be, I think would be helpful.
Would do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rau, please.
Yeah, excellent job, we've done an phenomenal job raising the awareness and brand of Morrisville. I just, one, well, not really a question, suggestion is, and I mentioned at the last council meeting this week, I really think that, given how great you've been doing communications, I think the department can really help our Veterans Initiative, in terms of just bringing awareness of, you know, trying to bring more on the Morrisville.
Fundraising, yeah.
Just getting the message out, you know, to do the community work, or perhaps working with companies in the area, you know, maybe through the chamber. So I think that that's one thing that we could do that could really raise awareness of it, you know, so that as they're trying to raise the money, more people can know about the fact that, I think there's a lot of people out there, despite all the work internally, that don't know that we're looking at building a Veterans Award, right? So that could be just something.
Yeah, definitely up there.
Yeah, plenty to do, but that's just an idea.
Of course.
The messages to the HOAs, they also go to the apartment managers?
They do, yes.
That's an important part of our community now, too. Okay, don't see anything else, I think we're concluding part one.
Ah, great timing.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I believe that we're scheduled for a 15-minute break, I think that will be adequate. It's 8:02 right now, let's please reconvene at 8:17. Thank you. A little bit, and that's okay. We're going to come back into session at this time, thank you very much, part one went very well. Looking forward to part two, I turn it back over to Town Manager Page.
Thank you, Mayor. Fire Chief Lizinski's going to update on our fire department activities, save the date, February 7th, we'll be swearing them in.
Awesome.
Chief?
Oh, what was that again? I'm sorry, say again.
February 7th, it'll be in your news and notes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for having us, and thank you for having me, I'm very excited to give you this presentation. I think I actually am the rookie in the room, I think there's some, most of the department heads or all of them have been here longer in either an interim basis, so. So as you can see on our first slide is our mission statement. Our mission statement is a part of our strategic plan, we've had our mission statement for about four years now. It is one of the three guiding documents in our accreditation portfolio. CIPSE requires us to do a pretty hefty lift with our accreditation documents. This year, we'll be updating our internal one, our standard to cover, which is a community risk assessment that we have for the deployment of resources. In addition, we do a self-assessment manual, that's, we have about 250 performance indicators, core competencies, it gets about 400 pages. All in all, our accreditation documents are about 500 to 600 pages, which is probably one reason why you only see 23 fire departments in the state of North Carolina that are actually accredited out of the 1,000 of them. The amount of data analysis and GIS work that goes into those documents is robust. We analyze almost every point in the dispatch and arrival of services, every point in that, so it all gets managed. Likewise, with our ISO rating, we have a Class 1. We are very proud of that, that's very strategic for both the town and our contract areas inside of the unincorporated areas in the county. You add that all together, and it means that only 114 fire departments in the nation are actually accredited and have a Class 1 rating. Mr. Bill likes to say that's 1/10 of 1%, he actually made me say that, so I wanted to make sure I did. All of that really is to go to say the individuals that you see at the top, the personnel, they really are driving a lot of that, and I like to say that the 54 individuals that actually ride fire trucks work for a living, as opposed to us in fire admin. So it's really a sort of a circular type of delivery of services. We've had many highlights this year. I'd like to point out our graduation, our first in-house fire recruit graduation, that is really large for us, that is very, that is sort of a game changer for us on a lot of different levels. We obviously are having our groundbreaking, well, we had our groundbreaking at Fire Station 3, and we'll be opening it in sometime in July or hopefully June. That strategically locating that fire station closer to, in town, to deliver the services to not only our residents in our community, but also to provide fire protection for that unincorporated area in RTP, is pretty important to us. Part with our accreditation, the whole technology that we need inside the fire department is growing as quickly as it is with the data analysis and the GIS work. In fact, the other day, we had a situation where, on the way to a call, a telecommunicator took a picture from a traffic light, or a traffic camera at an intersection, sent it to the MDT, so that's the computers on the fire trucks, so they can see exactly where the fire was based on the telecommunicator's access to that traffic camera. So that's pretty amazing technology. We, our fire staff deals with a lot of different record management systems. We also are seeing a drastic rise in not only diesel fuel, but the aging of our fire apparatus, our apparatus are about 9.2 years on average, that's the length, that's how old they are. We're also seeing a drastic increase in not only the cost of maintaining those ladder trucks, but just the general cost of them being brand-new, and they're escalating pretty quickly. I'm not even going to tell you how much, because I like to keep you all happy for right now. We are also, we have an ongoing effort to achieve diversity in the applicants, and I'm going to actually say, it's not necessarily a challenge, we are looking at that as an opportunity. One example is, for us to have that, the recruit class, that really broadens our applicant pool. When we're really hiring individuals from the fire service, that really is just sort of, you're not really getting, casting a large net over applicants that might not already be certified. So that graduation, that in-house fire recruit graduation is super important to us. In fact, we're hoping to have another one in the foreseeable future. We are also doing things, removing barriers that have traditionally been a part of the fire service, we're making our MPAT, which is our physical agility test, the pass/fail, we're doing a lot of outreach efforts, so we're trying to really broaden that applicant pool. The other thing we're trying to do is obviously retain the amazing staff that we currently have. As you've heard Lori and other individuals talk about our benefits and our pay package, we have to remain competitive with fire service. For the longest time, was a bit in a bubble, where we did not have to have those sort of turnover rates, but we are starting to experience them now, just because of the labor shortage that everybody is having. So to deliver those services appropriately, we are not only asking for additional staff or additional fire trucks, but we are trying to engineer our fire trucks to get there quicker. One of that is the traffic preemption system, that obviously gives the right away to our fire and police apparatus, and so it's kind of like, you know, you look at both, how many fire trucks or police cars do we need, but we also look to see how we can do technology to get there quicker, to deliver those services in our stated goals. Public safety radio replacement plan, that's pretty robust. I think it's worth noting that that was a collaborative effort between fire, police, and public works, that just shows that your departments are not operating in a silo, but we are actually watching each other's blind spots and making sure that we're in a group effort getting the equipment that we need. And then, once again, the apparatus and tool and replacement, just to note, that, those are getting super expensive, and that's on our horizon, and we are trying to plan with budget and make sure that those fit into the programming of the town's budget overall. And then, obviously, the planning of delivery of prevention and emergency services, once again, there's that planning GIS kind of data analysis concept that we have going. There's a lot of planning where how we distribute the fire trucks, how much we concentrate those fire stations with them, strategically locating all of the fire stations where they need to be for growth long-term. This is a very dynamic built environment, and we're trying to always understand what's coming next, so that we can make sure we're delivering those fire trucks where they need Part of our diversity, DEI initiative in the department is, not only are we trying to hire individuals for the next 30 years, not historically what the fire service has hired for the past 30 years, but we're also making sure that our current employees lead with education. We had all 20 of our supervisors take a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Certificate class at University of South Florida. That is just helping us educate our staff to make sure that we're leading with that engagement, that sense of belonging that we need our fire staff to have. Unit movement versus unit responses, I want to touch on that for a second, you can see how drastically they're going up. One of the things with unit movements and call responses is, you know, we, let's say you're a moving company and you have one, you have to move a couch, do you need one individual to move it, or four individuals to move it? We quantify, we try and analyze that data to make sure, is it an EMS call where you get one fire truck, or is it a structured fire where you get six fire, or six fire trucks? That is a data analysis that we have, are always looking at. Our prevention staff is, their workload is very high. One of the nuances with the fire prevention staff is, they inspect a building up until CVO, but they also then have a responsibility to continue inspecting those buildings based on the fire code and the routine inspections. They also have a large community risk reduction component that is now accreditation and ISO is requiring, so it's not just the prevention, but it's the community reduction of injuries and that type of stuff that they're looking into. And I'd like to, I'd like to, everybody to, I'm calling for an investigation, I am not, I don't know how that Turkey Bowl picture got in there, but I'm going to ask our police department to investigate if somebody hacked our PowerPoint, because I would never have put in there, "They cheated," and I would like a recount on everything. And I'll quickly want to end with a quick story. So we talked about a bunch of data, a bunch of output, about potential outcomes, but this is how empathetic your fire staff is. About a month ago, we had a crew that was in Food Line. They were standing behind a family, and they, the family was having trouble with their government assistant card, and they could not buy their food. Our fire staff pooled their money and bought the food for them. And those stories happen every day, but they don't oftentimes percolate the fire admin, because that's what they do day in and day out. So not only do they run calls, but they care deeply for the community. They don't pass vehicles unless they need a tire changed, they don't, they help somebody if they need fuel, and that stuff never comes to me, and it probably won't ever come to you, but it happens daily. So with that said, questions?
That's a strong finish. Looking down the line. Oh, my.
We have a good EAP program, don't we? We do. We lost. Next. It wasn't even close. We thought, I mean, I can come up with a bunch of excuses, but they're just going to be just that, but there's always next year. We did tie the Turkey Bowl number one.
Everyone's a winner.
Thank you, Mayor.
And the first one, at least.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Robati? Councilmember Robi, please.
So relating to the Turkey Bowl, are the police departments just in better shape?
Well, you know, there's a saying that police don't deliver justice, they deliver you to justice, and I believe they deliver justice to us. So I'm not quite sure what happened there. We lost, though.
Okay, so just let us know what we can do to help support your retention, anything to address the turnover rates. And I think you gave us a little bit of a heads-up that there's going to be some budgetary impacts, so in the back of my mind, we're getting prepared for that. A few years ago, public safety radios was a big lift. It sounds like this year, equipment might be. So thank you for the little heads-up. Mayor Pretten Johnson, I'm sorry, you weren't finished. Councilmember Robi?
I did actually just have one question. So the, it sounds like the new fire trucks are going to be, are going to be increasingly equipped with IoT devices, they're going to, and I think that that might make them, supply chain issues being what they are, is that going to change the way that you, like the supply chain issues that we're almost definitely going to have in sourcing fire trucks, is that going to change the way that you, the way, the timeline in which you order new equipment? Is it, so how are you dealing with that?
Our last ladder truck took 10 months to build. They're saying that they're going to take 28 to 30 months to build now. I think we're, what Jeannie and I have done is we've, and Dawn, is we've worked on a very robust replacement plan so the town can judge when we need another fire truck. We're also trying to get into the qualitative, quantitative measurement of when we need fire trucks so that if we need to pull one up or push one back, I think we're also trying to extend the life expectancy of them. So to your point, I think it's not only just ordering vehicles, but taking care of the ones we have. And then, so for us, when we get an apparatus, we actually keep that apparatus because we have to keep a backup for in case the main one goes out. So when we take, when we buy a new one, we actually need some life expectancy out of the ones we currently have. So to your point, we're working with the Budget Office to make sure that we have a plan in place, that if we have to order one and we know we're not going to get one for 30 months, then that's accommodated in the budget plan.
As they become more and more computer-equipped, has that caused, have you noticed a difference in the amount of time out of service? I just ask because my car has a ton of computer stuff on it.
Right.
Literally in shop all the time.
Well, outside of the MDT, that's actually on the front, in the front company officer, and then they have one in the back. There's four computers on our new ladder truck. We're actually not finding, we're not experiencing problems with the computers. It's just the old-fashioned brakes, tires, front ends, type stuff like that. It's that old-fashioned, just the mechanics breaking, not necessarily the computerized stuff. That's actually the thing that doesn't break, honestly.
Yeah, that's good, that you can plan for. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor Pretten Johnson, please.
So Chief, I want to make sure I hear you right. Did you say the, the average life of our vehicles is 9.2 years?
The average life that we currently have is, on average, our vehicles are 9.2 years old.
Got it.
We're trying to keep them as long as we possibly can. We have two engines that are from 2006.
Okay, and is there, 2006, there a, there a standard in the industry with that 9.2 number?
There is a standard, but one of the nuances with us is since we run the Quin concept and those ladder trucks are first out, there's not necessarily an industry standard for our deployment model. So we are a unique where we run, I mean, the other day, our fire staff ran 35 calls in one day. We usually run 10 to 12, but we ran 35 in one day. So the workload that are putting on these ladder trucks, we're actually developing kind of an industry standard, and we're doing a pretty good job of analyzing the data, how much each truck costs to replace. Currently, we have two, we have an apparatus, to date, we have $35,000 into it just to keep it running in this fiscal year. So we're analyzing all that data and seeing from a qualitative and a quantitative perspective when is a good time to move it into reserve and buy a new apparatus. So we're trying, to your point, we're trying to extend the life expectancy of them as long as we can, but currently, right now, our average age of our apparatus is 9.2 years.
Okay, okay.
Does that make sense?
That's helpful. And Mr. Bill was right, you should have put that statistic in there.
Yeah, he typically is, just for the record.
I was going to say, I think that's significant and something to be really proud of, that you're not only the best, you're the best of the best of the best.
And we're one of the smallest. Those ISO and accreditation models, they don't care how big you are. Those documents you write are the same no matter what size you are. So it's for us to do it with the smaller staff is becoming increasingly difficult.
Well, thank you for that, too.
You're welcome.
For that work and for that piece of information. And then, lastly, you are right. The men and women of this department, they stop and help everybody, it doesn't matter. I even was on the receiving end and had a tire changed.
Yeah.
And they were in their dress whites, and there was not a spot on either one of them.
Perfect.
How they changed a tire in, it was like 10 minutes flat.
Yeah.
And were as clean as could be. So you're right, they helped everybody, so appreciate that.
It's almost in our, it's in our DNA, and it has been for a while. I mean, that's just the empathic side to your fire department.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Ralph, please.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. With regards to your recruitment and retention, you talked about outreach efforts, so can you give us a few examples of those?
Sure, we're trying to analyze what that best looks for us. We've gone to, the county has had a lot of outreach with their fire academy, so we've piggybacked on that. We've gone to the high schools around here, we've gone to the colleges, we've had, we've gone to any, any job fair that we can, that we see in the vicinity here, and quite frankly, we've just stopped and talked to people. And, I mean, some of the conversations I've had is they're just shocked that they're actually a job in the fire service that they can have. They've always just viewed it as not something they could either do for a lot of reasons. So it's just those daily conversations we have day in and day out with anybody that we possibly can.
Are you doing anything different with regards to diversity in applicants?
We are. So we talked about changing the MPAT, so that's our physical agility test to get hired, to a pass/fail. Historically, the International Association of Firefighters say only 18% of all females pass a physical agility test. So when we run our next academy, what we're going to do is we're going to have five to six open houses, and we're going to set this physical agility test up, and we're going to have the opportunity for everybody to come and work on those stations. We are debating whether or not we're going to have a written test this next time. Some fire departments are moving away from a written test. Historically, you use it to see if you can pass your EMT. Fire departments are finding that that might be a barrier, and we're analyzing what that looks like for us. So every, every single opportunity we have to remove any barrier, we're analyzing it and making sure we are doing the right thing.
Okay. And then, another question out of curiosity. You're talking about, there's a lot of analysis being done to determine when to replace fire trucks, where to locate them. Who's doing that analysis? Is it in-house or are you?
That's a great question. We, so we historically used on-duty staff to do that, anybody that had the skillset to do that. We're finding that's not really sustainable. First of all, their workload, their, the training hours they need to, and then just the child safety seats and all the stuff they have to do. So we're analyzing what that best looks like. A lot of fire departments have individual staff that are dedicated to that. We are potentially requesting those. I don't want to get, I know you guys have a retreat, so I don't want to speak to that, but we are, we are trying to get some standalone individuals that can do that because what we're also finding is people who are good at GIS data analysis are not necessarily individuals that typically like to ride fire trucks, so.
Yeah, I didn't know.
No, right? There's two different skillsets there, so.
Okay, I have one last question, and maybe I'm supposed to know this already, but you talked about Fire Station Number 3 coming online in July. So where are the fire trucks and the staff?
Right. So we have cohabitated Kerry Station 7 since 2006 on the other side of 55. So those individuals will show up to work one day, they'll get their stuff, they'll get on the fire truck, and they'll drive over to the next one.
Okay, I forgot about that one. Thank you.
And that's sort of that strategic realignment where they're on the other side of 55, they really need to be in town for our workload.
You made it sound pretty easy to grab their stuff, move over.
It is for you and I, Mr. Mayor, but it won't be for them.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Garmella.
Yeah, I think, Chief Luskey, like, I wanted to, how many in Wake Forest do you have ISO? I think with the last Fire Commission, I think there was, out of the 12 towns, we had nine or something which are ISO.
I want to say six, but I'm not quite sure. I can get back to you. It's less than half, I know that.
Okay. Yeah, the reason, like, I bring this up because, you know, I'm on the Fire Commission along with Brandon. It's such a competitive area where, you know, the salaries and the close proximity of where they stay, you know, also determines a lot of the things. And the amount of investment that we do on, you know, the fire engineers and this one, it is super critical, you know, not to discount police or anything, but especially for the fire, is the amount of training it takes. For me, especially, it is super critical to ensure we retain. I think the Fire Academy was an excellent idea, I think, getting, because people are struggling, we have seen in the fire, and the latest bonus that they gave to the fire, you know, and Matt said, like, it was a lot of money.
Yeah.
So, but a key I wanted to say is, like, all the work that you do, and especially keeping that, going back to what our HR director said, that human, you know, interaction and southern hospitality.
Yeah.
That is the key, that gels everything together.
Absolutely.
Hats off to that for at least keeping our trucks running and the things. And around 9.5, what happens to the trucks which are recycled, you know, like, they're sent to somewhere else, or?
We sell them on gov deals, and it's really hard to determine how much money we get for them because sometimes a specific fire department might need that specific truck the time of year, so we just sell them on gov deals.
Okay. And obviously, Jeannie, like, last time, you know, knows the calculators of, you know, we have the results set money for the radios, so the trucks will also be, I'm guessing, will be as part of that, like, a five-year plan that you start accruing the money into that, right?
Correct. It's just the escalation is impacting, we need to really be step by step.
I agree, because I asked someone, but someone said that the tire itself was a thousand bucks, you know, to change, you know, compared to.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
But anyway, kudos to your.
It's obnoxious, actually.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ralph, please.
Well, just as a follow-up, I spent some time with Commissioner Ozzy a few weeks ago, and he reiterated to me what a big, big deal it is to get those. Kudos on that. And I, I did want to, another feedback I have is, I think that I really appreciate the community, Fire Safety Day was a real success this year. The other one that I really liked was the, when the commissioner came and you did, so I think those kinds of things really educate people about just how quickly a fire can spread. So to the extent we can continue to do that.
Absolutely.
Would be great, you know, moving forward, whatever we can do to support more education.
Thank you. Yeah, we absolutely will continue having those events.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well done, rookie.
Thanks, Chief.
There better be a picture of fire in here.
So the winner of the Turkey Bowl, representing the police department.
Let me get that for you. I know that would be difficult.
Chief Acosta?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you first for the opportunity, not just to listen to me, but to everybody tonight. We know this is a lot of time that you guys put into this, so thank you very much. You know, this picture you see in front of you right now, you all know me well enough now to know how proud I am of the folks that I work with. However, at the moment, I regret that picture's not of the Turkey Bowl.
Next time.
So just a, just a brief overview, you've seen this organizational chart before. It remains the same. We currently have 47 sworn officers and two civilian personnel. We're currently going into our year four of our accreditation. As I shared with you last year, we've moved to our advanced accreditation, which is roughly 153% higher in the amount of standards that we have to prove. So it's a, it's a pretty heavy lift for us. The first year was our year three, which was last year, and we were successful. So we're probably around 73% already as to the standards that we've already proved. So we're really close to finishing up our year four already, so I'm really proud of how we have all collaborated together for that. This year, we've, we've really worked, this team here you see in front of you, it's our collaboration efforts with the town, we've really put a lot of work into that. We really believe that in many cases, as important as every department of the town is, that oftentimes, because we're, we are on the street 24/7, that, you know, oftentimes we can be considered the front porch of the town. And so we really want to make sure that our efforts are collaborative. One thing that we've done, we've really taken a strong approach this year, is also collaborating internally and making sure that we really identify and expound upon all of the experience that all of our staff has, regardless of what their years of experience may be. So some of our community partners that we have really been honored to work with is the Special Olympics, we had our first torch ride, which was very successful this year, the Child Welfare Family Services. We also work with Interact, ChildSafe, and as you know, many more. We've had some honors this year. We honored Bruno, who worked with us for quite a few years, who passed away last year. He was retired, or retired K-9. Officer Schmidt was, Schmidt was honored for Officer of the Year from the Chamber of Commerce. Tanaja Brown, she received her accreditation, and we had many more. You remember, we had some lifesaving awards, and so we have, we have a lot of folks that we really try to make sure that we recognize. And there's been a lot, a lot of successes over the last year. So we're always looking to expand our services and grow and continue that success, not just with the police department, but for the town as a whole. We've rebranded our Citizen Police Academy to the Community Police Academy, which we're, is underway currently, and that's been successful so far. We got a new coordinator, Brad Mamble, who's done an excellent job in that position. Our Traffic Safety Unit has been very successful and done a great job at really working with every depart, or division within our department, making sure that we are not working in silos and that we're collaborating together to really identify the hotspots of our town so that we can have very specific directed patrols. We've created hot sheets so we know exactly which areas have the, a lot of the violations and which areas those are in so that we can, not just TSU, but our whole department can be a part of solving those, those problems. We've, over the last year, we've really worked hard at getting the face of our officers out in the community. We started doing PSA, so not only are we sharing with the public some of the information that they really want to know and need to know, but we're also humanizing the badge and the officers that work with the police department. I shared with you a little bit about our Calea standards, and, you know, we went from 180, I think it's 184 standards, to over 460. So again, that's a pretty heavy lift. We took an opportunity to partner with IACT, which is the International Association of Chiefs of Police, and they worked with us to find a baseline and give, allow us to have a little bit clearer focus on, on moving forward, our needs. They help us with some needs assessment. And that's really given us an opportunity to identify what our strengths are, as well as identify maybe where our as well as identify maybe where our delta points are, where we can put in a little bit more focus. Our training, naturally, you know, there's areas where, you know, we're much like the fire department, where we train a lot. It's been a struggle at times because of staffing. So, you know, that plays a role in how we train. But at the same time, we really, we really put a lot of focus in making sure that our officers have the training that they need. This year, we've really worked at trying to identify candidates that we can sponsor to go to BLAT. You know, when we're recruiting, it's always nice to be able to recruit and hire folks who have experience. But it's equally as important to hire folks that don't so that we can have people for longer. And so this year, we were actually very successful in that. And we actually just hired somebody that we sent to BLAT, which was, which was good for us. We have reestablished our TRT team, our Tactical Response Team. You know, naturally, this is a pretty heavy lift for us. It's been very successful. We've got our officers who are now training and working closer to being deployed. We're working with other agencies and trading with other agencies as well so that we can leverage our staffing with them so that when we have situations, that we have other teams on hand that we can work with. And again, much like I just shared with you, you know, we partnered with IACP to develop that plan moving forward. So some of our initiatives, I know that you guys are very aware of what a lot of our initiatives are. We go, you know, you see us in the community a lot, just to kind of run through some of them. We just finished Operation Vision Zero, which was a zero-tolerance operation, where not always, you know, are we always focused on writing citations. But there are times when there are certain violations and they become such a problem that you have to make an aggressive stance. And we had an operation for a month that was pretty successful. I don't have all the stats here tonight, but it was pretty successful. And all of our staff worked together for the success of that campaign. But you guys, you see us at National Night Out, we have Click It Ticket. We partner with Governor Highway Safety Program and a lot of these initiatives. You know, our TSU, they deployed the drone program to help them with accidents. We also partner with the fire department when using our drones, so it's multipurpose. Again, just our, we find it to be very important naturally to bridge that gap with the community, build those strong bonds, and just be with our community and so that they see us more as people and not just officers, but they see us just like they are. So, you know, we look at the investment of the police department. Shared some of these things with you. One of the highlights I will share is we've taken a quick look or a deep look at our training division and really kind of restructured it so it's more of a mentoring opportunity where our Training Sergeant works with our officers to help build them a path for success. You know, critical tools, you all know how important the tools are for our job. We're always trying to set a successful path on replacing the necessary equipment. We have our body cams coming up for replacement soon, so we're really looking at that plan. We're always, we're going to continue to look at expanding our services for our domestic violence and mental health. We've been working with partners that have really helped us be a lot more successful there. And we're looking at, we're taking a deep look at our reserve program to really leverage our reserve program to assist us in different types of events or initiatives as well. Okay. So I won't run through this, I'll just let you guys kind of take a look at it. I will say, you know, as important as our accreditation is, you've heard me say a lot about that. There's 615 law enforcement agencies in North Carolina, only 67 are accredited. The advanced accreditation is even lower than that. So we're really going to be part of an elite group of police departments. So I'll just let you guys take a quick look at that. I know I'm running out of time here, I want to give you guys an opportunity to answer any questions that you may have. But I think it's important to share some of these photographs. You know, I tell you guys all the time how proud I am of the police department and the women and men that work in the police department. And I think this is just, when you see the looks and the smiles on their faces, it really speaks to their passion for the job. So I'll leave you guys with any questions that you have.
Those are some great photos. We talked about humanizing the badge and those PSA's, they're really great. I wanted to also give a kudo to the fire department doing the Code Corner, things like that, using our video and communications to really step things up. I was just wondering, as we try to do more outreach, if there's a possibility of you considering working with the comms department. You guys are on the street, you're at accidents first, you'll know if there's going to be lane closures. I know Cary has a Cary Traffic social media Twitter. So there have been incidents where you guys have been really great about saying, "These lanes are going to be closed and why?", and then telling people when they reopen. So if that becomes more of a part of our culture, I think that would, our residents and commuters would really appreciate it. So I know that's another lift. I know you guys are already doing a lot. I just wanted to put that out there as a.
It's a great idea.
Possible thing in the future. Councilmember Garamella, please, and then Councilmember Ralph.
Thanks, Chief. It's a great presentation. If you could go back to the slide of the stats, like. I'm looking at the domestic violence, you know. Or, you know, like what are the trends that you're seeing? Is it mental health? I know you've said one of the slides where you're working towards, you know, training your.
Yep. So if you look back 2019, then to 2020, how quick it has advanced in both our domestic violence and our CIT calls. We kind of look at that together because both, you know, when we look at mental health and when we look at domestic violence, they're both folks that are in crisis. And so we really look at those kind of holistically. And, you know, the core of why, so some of it can be our outreach. So one thing is, you have these calls, but I do believe that it's growing. But at the same time, I do believe that our collaboration with agencies in Wake County, sometimes it's the outreach. So when we partner with them and we share and we educate the public and they realize that they can call the police in these situations, then your calls may increase, but the acts of domestic violence could have been happening for many, many years. But because of the education and educating the public, now your calls may actually be going up, if that makes sense.
And is there anything, you're seeing a common trend that could be worked towards, you know, diversity that we have? Double clicking deep into it, what are the common issues? A way that to handle it?
Yeah.
That's the reason I don't know the internal details of.
Yeah. Yep. So I think that it's important for us to, you know, as we continue to explore different resources of kind of expanding these types of programs, looking at, looking at the core issues and trying to dive into that is very important. So definitely, thank you.
Thank you for all that you do.
Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Abadi.
Well, first of all, one thing I would say is that the community service part of the department is unbelievable. This last year, I was able to go to every stop on the Santa Line with the department and really saw a different side to our officers. So I really commend you and the department for that. Really, excuse me, means so much to our residents to have police officers that are going out there, being with the community, coming together with families. So just thank you for that. I have two questions. The first is, the first is, I've been seeing recently, there's some bills in the legislature that are going to allow local governments to add on to like red light cameras and automated cameras. I was just curious as to your professional opinion, you know. I know there's been, like, they tried in Cary and I think there was a suit and whatnot, but do those kinds of automated technologies work to offload staffing levels so that if people are speeding, they automatically get notified? Or is it more of a burden for the department?
So we've actually explored some of those just to see what kind of technologies out there that can assist us in a lot of different aspects, not just red light and the enforcement part of it. So really, we're kind of looking into that, you know, that's kind of a, there's a lot of research that needs to go into that, I guess is the best way to put it.
Okay, thank you. I've got two more questions. Second question, and it's a question I'm not comfortable asking, but recently, there's been so much gun violence, it's almost to the point where you just forget how many there've been. So to what extent, maybe the department's already doing this, but, you know, just doing, you know, like, training, especially with large gatherings or churches or temples. So in the event of an after shooter incident, we know kind of where to exit, what to do. We've never even gotten training here in City Hall, but if a shooter were to come in, what is the protocol? So it's a terrible question to ask.
I'd like to correct that. You have received that training.
We have, yeah. But I mean, just in terms of, you know.
And we've actually scheduled training for you again.
Okay.
So that's coming up in the future. We offer, we actually have a portal that folks can go on to request training. So if there are different places that would like that, it comes straight to the PD and we line up instructors for that as well.
And my final, my final question is, you talked about humanizing the department. Is there a place where, like on the website, where we can go and see the, maybe it's somewhere else, I'm not looking, but the faces of the officers? Because when you go to the staff directory, it just has the name.
Right.
Is there a place for that?
And that's the employee portal, not the open portal. So we don't have the pictures of our officers on the website.
Okay, so then we have to go to the employee portal.
Yeah.
That's deliberate for security purposes?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Abadi?
I'm looking at 2021 and 2022, and it looks like there's a domestic violence call or a crisis, a suicide attempt one a day. And that seems, that seems like a lot. How does Morrisville stack up for that in terms of neighboring communities?
So naturally, I don't have the stats as far as what our neighboring communities look like. What I can share with you is, you know, it's not just Morrisville. You know, that's a, domestic violence and CIT is a national problem that, you know, all police departments are facing. But I think it's important that we continue to look closely at home and do what we can to mitigate it the best we can.
I know that domestic violence calls covers a wide array of what can possibly happen, but I do know that sometimes you're dealing with a violent crime and certainly a suicide attempt or a mental health crisis is traumatic for the officer as well as for the victim. So what types of, what types of support in those cases do officers get when they witness a violent crime or they're called to suicide? Or what do we do for them to support them?
Yeah. So that's a great question. I really appreciate that. So currently, one thing that we took a look at, our chaplain program. And so what our chaplain program is, we're building multi-faith chaplain program. They'll be visiting with our officers, riding in their cars, giving them a resource to talk to privately where an officer doesn't have to go into an office. They're in their safe place to have that conversation. Secondly, as you heard from Lori Shadlik, they too are working on more of a town-wide wellness program. So I think it's not just the police department, we're looking at it more globally as a town. But you're exactly right. And then we also offer EAP as well. And we actually have somebody who works in the police department that we lean on as well. And we're currently researching more of a peer support program as well.
I met him at the award ceremony, I share, remember that now?
Yeah.
What's the uptake on that kind of, because I understand that, you know, holistically as a town, we're focusing on wellness, but police officers, firefighters, see things that the rest of us just do not see.
Right.
What's the uptake on the, on the participation in post-traumatic, post-traumatic situation? If you have any idea, are most officers pretty comfortable with that or?
Well, I couldn't tell you because we don't ask. You know, we try to, we try to give them that resource, but it's anonymous as well. So I do think that as we continue to evolve in the career of law enforcement and especially within our leadership, we promote mental health for officers. And I can tell you, when I first started, it wasn't promoted. Now it's okay, and I think that people recognize that it's actually okay to do that and it's safe.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Mayor Pretam Johnson, please.
Thank you, Pete, or I'm sorry, Chief Acosta. It was a great presentation. And I think I've met a lot of your officers and they're all super great people. I lost my place here with questions. So along, some of the questions that Councilmember Abadi was asking with the domestic violence, under crisis investigations, it says it's standard line services. So how are you about doing that?
Yeah. So currently, we're working with management to seek different resources on how we can address having more direct services with domestic violence victims and folks who are experiencing crisis.
Oh, so I really like the picture of, I think that's you setting cross legs with some kindergartners or first graders.
It took me a while to get up, by the way. So I got down easy, getting up was not so easy.
Yeah, that's cute. Is there an established formal program for that? Or is to go out into schools or is it just sort of random?
Yep. So there's not necessarily a formal program. So I think that the town and the police department has created a culture of working within the community. Though I really enjoy that, and that is a picture of me, I've got a ton of pictures. I've got a ton of pictures of all of our officers who go to preschools, who go to elementary schools and read to the kids. And I wish that I could share all of those because they're equally as important. So we are in, we're out there a lot, unfortunately. We don't have the time for me to share all those pictures with you and tell you all the stories. But to answer your question, there's not necessarily a formal process. Folks call us, and in that situation, they call and we go. And then we also have times where our officers, and that's what makes me so proud, our officers go out on their own a lot and kind of volunteer to be out there when they could be in their cars, but they volunteer to get out there and read to the kids.
So what about, you know, I think it is important to do these types of things, like you were saying, to humanize yourselves. And it's important that while they're young. while they're young, but do you also go into middle schools or high schools and some sort of, um, interface with the teenagers that during that time would be a pretty important time to feel, you know, to not be intimidated by police officers?
Right.
But feel more of to humanize you to the teenagers?
So, unfortunately, you know, naturally, we don't have any here in the town, but we actually do have a few officers who are trained in, um, defensive driving. And so that gives them an opportunity to get in the classroom and just have conversations with, uh, some of the younger, uh, students, um, in that age group. Um, it's not necess, you know, and it's hard to, i- it's good for them just to have conversations because that's where folks realize, um, you know, that we're just like they are. We're just people that wear a uniform.
Yeah. So, yeah, that was a kind of a dumb question considering that Morrisville doesn't have a high school.
Do you have, do you do a high school?
But we do. Yeah, we got one coming. Right.
But yeah, I think, you know, I'm just thinking back to my teenage years and, you know, my interaction with police, a police officer was getting pulled over for speeding.
Right.
I never do that anymore. Um, but you know, these days in high, high schools, you know, they sometimes have a safety public officer that, you know, I imagine in some cases that's a, has a positive influence.
Yeah.
Maybe not always. And so I think whatever the, um, your police officer can do, like you're doing.
Right.
Like the, um, coffee with the cop in your visit to the AICOAs. Um, the, um, I was, did wanna ask you about the, um, citizens, or I'm sorry, community, um, police academy? How is that going? And how many people are signed up?
I think we have, this year, I think we have 10, um, that are part of our, our, uh, group. Um, and it's been, it's been very successful. They're pretty interactive. Um, so it's been going well.
So will you be doing that yearly?
We, we already do. Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. We just, we rebranded it this year. Yeah.
And I would say on a personal note, um, you know, I, you know, I've done police ride-alongs twice now. And, um, the two officers that I was with, um, they were both just wonderful people. And I, um, just really, uh, positive and, you know, wanting to, um, you know, answer any of my questions that I had. And I, you know, got to see parts of Morrisville that I never would otherwise see. And it just gave me, uh, so much more insight and understanding, uh, that I wouldn't otherwise, you know, we, we just think about what's in our little world.
Right.
But, um, other things going on, that those people are still part of Morrisville.
Right.
And, um, it was such a positive learning experience. Um, and I was, uh, I don't know if this, i- if there's like, uh, an initiative to do this, but that the first officer was Officer Long. She was a social worker before. And, um, are there other police officers that have that type of background as well?
Yeah, we do. So we have one and, and Officer Long is another one. And that's what I meant by we're really tapping into the, the strengths and gifts of all of our officers, no lo, no matter how long they've been with us.
Yeah, I thought that was great. Is there any opportunity that, um, does the public get to request police ride-alongs?
They do. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. But I think, you know, for anyone that's listening to this, it's a, it's a very positive, informative experience.
Yeah.
So I, I was tired apparently. But, um, yeah, it was good.
Thank you. I'm, I'm glad you enjoyed it.
Mayor Protam, your questions?
So just to, to follow up a minute on councilmember Fender's, um, question about police officers in the high school. In Wake County, the public high schools do have police officers and they are, and all the high schools have them. Not all the middle schools do. If, and I, that I would not swear to, that you need to, I'm sorry.
School resource officers, SROs, yeah.
Yes. And their, their, um, resource officers come from the department in, from the town that they reside in. So Green Hill, Pep Creek, they have Cary police officers. So they, and they're out there almost all the time. I, I, again, I don't, I don't know that much about the program, if they're there, you know, every day of the week, but they're out there a lot. So, um, anyhow, I just have, we, we have run way over. So.
Yeah.
So I'm just gonna say, because I say this every time I see anybody in the Morrisville Police Department, I am so appreciative of the, uh, traffic unit and the work they're doing out there. Um, I live off Morrisville Parkway, so I see the work they do on Morrisville Parkway more than I see, um, some of the other, um, streets. But I know, I know Morrisville Carpenter, they are out there doing a fabulous job. So Chief, every time I, whether you're a captain, a sergeant, a lieutenant, whoever you are, I thank you. I thank you all for, um, for that. And especially those that are out there in the traffic unit, trying to stop the speeders that, um, I, I just don't, when we talk about the cigarette butts in the park, I mean, you know, I, it's, you, you can't be there every minute of every day checking on everybody that they're doing the right thing.
Right.
But we, we do, and this department does a heck of a lot to.
Thank you.
To help. So, um, and we appreciate it. I know the folks that live up and down Morrisville Parkway have reached out to me and have commented on that. So we are really appreciative. We can walk out there a little safely on Morrisville Parkway, maybe. Hopefully. That's a hope anyhow. Okay.
Uh, thank you very much, sir. And I guess one last question. Um, we do have the high school at Wake Tech now. I'm not sure if there might be an opportunity there to have a school resource officer embedded there from Morrisville.
Okay.
Like the other towns do, um, in preparation for Parkside, which is a middle school as well, to sort of see if that's something that we're gonna be choosing to do in the future. I'm looking at the town manager, maybe how to comment on that.
No, I'm ready to.
Yeah, I, I, as am I. I, I just wanted to say, we have, I think, another hour's worth of presentations.
Yeah, we have 15 minutes more. I mentioned, I do not want to shortchange the departments that have been waiting. Uh, we're moving into our development services departments. You see and talk to them more regularly, um, and, and maybe more attuned to some of theirs. But I don't want to shortchange them, especially as they've waited.
Can I just say one comment? Cause I think one of my comments may have been taken incorrectly. I'm not advocating for a school resource officer in every high school. I'm certainly not advocating for that. What I was suggesting is giving a, cause that person can be intimidating. What I'm suggesting is police officers going in there more, uh, as a, a, I don't know, friendly, um, uh.
A positive force.
Objective, rather than this, and the, the police officers there to break up fights or look to see whether you got weed in your locker or something like that.
And I'm, I'm happy.
That's not what Wake County does with the resource officers. They are there to blend in with the.
Okay, if, yeah.
Yeah. Look into the pro, it's a fabulous program.
I'm, I'm happy to share offline some information, um, if you like.
All right.
My experience at West Cary was that it was a very positive school resource officer.
Yes.
Uh, councilmember Abadi, did you have something else for the chief?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay. Um, so it's up to us to, um, really focus for the next presenters on questions, um, less observations, observations and stuff we can do at the retreat. So we can respect everyone's time. Does that sound reasonable to everybody? Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
All right. We're gonna start off development services with our planning department and Michelle Stiegel.
Okay. You have to give us a second to find that. It's more towards the back. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Okay. Yep. About three quarters of the way through.
Okay. Good evening, council. Some great presentations and discussions to follow. Um, but I am gonna go ahead and jump right in and just talk a little bit about the planning department. I know we see each other, um, somewhat on a regular basis, but try and cover some things that maybe you might not know as much about. Um, so in the department, um, we do have five core functions, um, development review, long-range planning, transportation planning, code enforcement, and the Morrisville Smart Shuttle. And there are 12 full-time staff in the department that help provide those services to all of you and the town. Um, we do have several new faces, um, in the department. Um, a lot of new staff joining the team over the last couple of years. Um, as a group, um, they have brought a lot of talent to their positions, to the department, to the town. Um, I can't say enough about this team. I wish I could take my seven and a half minutes just to talk about them. Um, but you do see in the staff overview section, um, some of the different certifications that the team has. Um, we have also brought someone on board that has a landscape design and horticultural background, someone who has an architectural degree and is working towards an architectural license, um, have someone who speaks Hindu. So just mentioning those things because they're skillsets that we haven't had on the staff in the past. And they really add to the internal discussions and evaluations that we have and help us have better informed dialogues and discussions with our applicants and developers in particular as well. Um, some of the highlights from, um, 2022 include the agreements with Wake Tech and the Wake County Public School System that we've talked about, continue to be very excited about those. Um, we also brought forward some text amendments to the tree preservation, landscape, and common open area sections of the code. I know that's something that the community and council had interest in for some time. So, um, particularly with the tree preservation, um, happy to see, um, that work completed. Um, and then about two years ago, council approved a number of zoning code amendments for the McCrimmon corridor. And as a result of, um, particularly those use regulations that you put in place that allowed a mix of use, allowed life science, um, over the past year, over one and a half million square feet of biomanufacturing space and 800 square feet of research lab space, um, have been proposed on the plans that have been submitted for review. Um, so a lot of activity, um, in that area and some really large, significant developments that could have significant impacts for the town over time. Um, looking at the things that influence our work, um, the first three bullets, um, on the slide are the same things that I talked about last year. Um, just how fast Morrisville is growing is a constant challenge for us. Um, in the past, when we've talked about development and keeping up with the infrastructure needs of the town with that development, we've talked about roads, we've talked about schools, trees, parkland. And as you know, we've added, um, this year to that discussion, electric capacity and electric needs. Um, and with the great economic development that we're seeing and the jobs that come with that, um, our challenges related to housing affordability continue to grow. So those are discussions that we'll be continuing to have with council, um, over the coming year and probably in, long into the future as well. Um, I'm gonna jump down to some of the rising costs that we're seeing with our transportation project. Um, Mark Spanioli and his team have done a great job with the Morrisville Carpenter Road Project. Um, on the planning end, we have three major projects that we're working with NC DOT on right now, um, Airport Boulevard Phase One, the McCrimmon widening, and then the NC 54 widening from 540 to perimeter park. Um, and NC DOT has seen a 35% increase in project cost over the last few years. That is having a significant impact on the town in terms of the timelines for these projects, the cost of the projects, and potentially what NC DOT is going to be able to support in the future. So we're very lucky to have three more projects actively being worked on and on the horizon. But is that, but that is something that we're continuing to watch. Um, with the Airport Boulevard Phase One project, those costs are continuing to increase. I know that that's probably part of what you're gonna be talking about, um, this weekend, is some of those rising costs that we're seeing with those projects. Um, and then, um, Town Center and TOD, really with Town Center, the credit for all of that goes to Brandon. Um, but both of those projects are things that the department, that the staff is really excited about. We look at those two projects and see significant potential and significant opportunity for the town to create that destination, to create a sense of place, to create an identity. Um, and so we're really excited about those and continuing to work on those and, and what they'll ultimately do for Morrisville. I think council is probably familiar with most, if not all, of the major initiatives that we're working on. So I'm not gonna review everything on this slide. Um, but one of the things that I will note is that when you look at the list of the major initiatives that we're working on, um, what you see is that the work of the department is changing and evolving. And we're starting to get into areas that the department historically hasn't provided service in. Um, so the Morrisville Smart Shuttle, that came online in October of 2021. Um, great service, but, um, that is an additional new service that the department is now providing that wasn't historically provided. Um, also looking at affordable housing, public art, um, again, not areas that the department has historically been involved with. So one of our challenges is how do we fit these great new initiatives into the workload of the department, um, when we're pretty much already at capacity? But you're, you're seeing the needs of the department, you're seeing the needs of the town grow. Um, when I look at the things that the town's getting involved with and, you know, going even outside of the department, we're a small town, but we do a lot of the things that big cities do. Um, so I think we should all be proud of that and all the work that we accomplish. Um, just some quick stats and figures. Um, the Smart Shuttle, um, is something that you're gonna be hearing more about at an upcoming town, town council meeting. So I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on that. Um, but generally speaking, we have seen a continual increase in ridership since we launched in October of 2021. Um, and to date, a total of 20,000, 21,000 rides, um, have been completed since we launched. Um, our peak was in November of 2022 with 63 rides a day, um, average in November. Looking at some of, um, just the stats, again, just to touch on a few of those, plan and permit reviews, about 3,500 completed last year. A lot of that is for types of reviews that council doesn't necessarily hear a lot about. Um, plot plan reviews, zoning compliance letters, assessment inquiries, signed permits, home occupation permits, final plat reviews. I could go on. Um, that's a lot of the work that happens behind the scenes, day to day, that you don't hear a lot about it, I think is good. That means things are operating rather smoothly and effectively. But it is a large volume of work and just wanna give those individuals the recognition for the work that they do do behind the scenes that you don't often hear about. Um, but a lot of reviews, a lot of inspections, a lot of preparing items for town council and planning and zoning board to review. So in that respect, um, the work of the planning department is very deadline-driven. Um, every staff member has multiple deadlines to meet a week, if not to meet every day. Um, and we're always in that agenda review process, preparing materials for you. Um, I think we're running short on time, but real quick, wanted to note special event permits. Um, we were averaging in the mid 50s for the number of special event permits that were issued a year before COVID hit. Obviously, COVID hit, um, those numbers dropped significantly and we even stopped taking in special event permits for a while. Um, but last year, um, 65 special event permits were reviewed. So that was a record high for us. Um, but it just, it does also, also show the community wanting to get out and gather and enjoy themselves. I think it probably ties into some of what you heard with Mary about what they're seeing with some of their program activity as well. Um, and then just some fun facts and some pictures of the department. Again, um, we have a lot of new members. So making sure that that team, um, gels and building that team, um, is a priority for me. And so you could see, um, the staff just getting together from, getting away from the day to day a little bit, enjoying, um, some different activities. Um, so we could refresh ourselves and, and go back and, and do all the work that everyone does for you every day. Um, so I am gonna stop there because I went over my seven and a half minutes and just see what questions you may have.
I've never seen yoga at the historic Christian church. I think that looks great.
Yeah.
Um, looking around, we spend a lot of time with you during meetings. So that's probably why we don't have a whole lot of questions right now about what you presented. Um, doing a great job with a department that you've crafted. Doing a great job with a department that you've crafted and built up some, so hopefully can keep on going. Looks like there's some new babies, too, which is pretty great.
Where do you see babies?
The two, Caleb and Brooke, both had children.
Oh, okay.
Very cute.
Okay. Okay, you are a big winner for the evening so far.
Well, I will take it.
Congratulations, well done.
Thank you, Michelle.
You can yield the rest of your time to...
Mark Spanioli, engineering. Who dressed up for you?
Looking, looking spiffy. He is here without his safety vest.
Yes, I already missed something. Good evening, council members. Mark Spanioli for the record, Director of Engineering. It's my pleasure to provide you with an annual update on the engineering department. I do have some script that I'm going to follow, but I'm going to go off script for a second and say that our department is probably one of the luckiest groups. Through our capital projects, we get to work with each and every department of the town, from finance to budget to planning to parks to fire police, we get to work with everybody. So it's pretty fun in that sense, and we work, of course, with the community every day on all the products that we're delivering. I will also say that our team loves the work that we do, and I'm going to say that from the heart because where else can we work and get to work on life science centers, new temples, fire stations, roadway reconstruction, parks, and everything else under the sun in all the one small compact city? So coming from a big city, I think that's pretty glorious, so I just thought I'd share that sentiment. So let's jump right in. Let's talk a little about the department details. Our mission statement revolves around efficiency, collaboration, and customer service. Those are the three primary functions that we think about each day. We have three divisions in our department, Development Services, Capital Projects, and Stormwater Management. And our Stormwater Manager, Ben Mills, will also be giving a presentation to highlight some of the stormwater work that we're doing. I'm extremely proud of our staff. We have 13 staff members, including myself. We do regular team building exercises and activities to make sure that we know the type of good work that we are doing each day. And just to be competitive with the rest of the town, I noticed some people highlighted this, I didn't put it in my presentation, but we do have over 180 years of combined professional experience. It's not the best of all the departments, but it's pretty high up there, so I thought I'd highlight that real quick. We've got six professional engineers in our department, a general contractor, certified flood pain manager, plenty of certifications in stormwater control measures, erosion control, and traffic control. We obviously do plan, review, and inspections for permitting and private development, including our own capital projects. We do have the capability of doing in-house CAD work, in-house design. We don't, we generally do that for minor projects. Some of the major projects will take a little bit more time than we generally can put towards the projects, but to take care of that, we do plenty of consultant management. We have architects, engineers, and surveyors on call for us when we do need to have services. And just to always highlight our capital projects, we can manage a project from early planning through construction completion and turning it over to one of our client departments like the Fire Department, which is getting a new fire station soon. So, all right. So let's talk about some of the great things that we've accomplished and some things we're working on. Fire Station 3, as you know, one of our largest capital projects, is being managed by our department. It's trending towards a summer completion on time. We're proud to say that the Morrisville Carpenter Road Project obviously is coming to completion, and we are on budget with that project, even though there's been a lot of material shortages and cost overruns, we are on budget with that project. And we do have additional signal work, as you know, that will go beyond the next few days, but we are trending towards completion. One of our engineering technicians, Brendan Goff, he actually studied and completed the Advanced Roads Scholar Program with the Federal Highway Administration. That's a, it's a big deal, it's a two-part program. He finished the previous program last year and he did the advanced program this year. And one of our capital projects managers, Eric Pearson, he actually completed, studied for and completed the professional certification for design build, which is part of Design Build Institute of America. So we're pretty proud of those folks in our group. Of course, we have some challenges and opportunities that we're always working on. We've obviously had a lot of material delays, project cost escalations that have just been part of the market throughout the country and probably throughout the world. We're working on succession planning and promotional development opportunities. We do have plans and ideas to promote from within as we move forward into the future. We're constantly leveraging our partnerships and grant opportunities, particularly with the Campo and DOT. And, you know, one of our biggest challenges is our CIP project workload continues to grow, and we are, we are working towards coming up with solutions to keep handling all the different projects that we are undertaking. All right, so we have a lot of current projects and a lot of future projects, some, some pretty big and important ones. You know, current projects include public safety type projects, transportation projects, pedestrian improvements, and stormwater projects. We're in all different phases throughout those projects. We, some of them are in design, some are in permitting, some are in bidding, and some of them are currently under construction. These are some of our more high-profile projects on the current project list that really impact, have a real impact to the community. For our future projects, we continue to work, or we are going to continue working on sidewalk gap projects, intersection projects. We're excited to start working on our new park projects for the Markham Properties and at the Wake Tech property. We have a new public works facility, it's a really, really giant endeavor for the town. We have a number of NC DOT projects that we're going to be working with, the McCrimmon Flyover, NC 54 Widening, and the extension of Airport Boulevard. We have major roadway reconstruction projects like the International Drive, which was once a paving project but has advanced to a reconstruction project. And we also have the Gable subdivision that needs to have full reconstruction of their roads there as part of the municipal service district funding that we put together. We, of course, want to redevelop the Pew House at some point, and we have additional public safety projects with a new fire station on the Wake Tech property. And something that's been keeping us quite busy lately is the start of the Town Center development. Obviously, we're all excited about that, but that is keeping our department pretty busy So here are some fun facts and figures. We have, we've had a continued number of project increases as the town continues to invest in capital projects. This is exciting. We, we're almost, pretty much doubled our investment in capital projects, and that continues to grow. We are growing our road and sidewalk networks throughout the town, obviously by the gap projects and new roadway projects that are continuing to come online. We did see a slight decrease in plan reviews and inspections, but it continues to remain pretty strong for the town from all the departments. And lastly, my favorite slide, of course, is, pictures are worth a thousand words, and I'm going to tell a little story about each one, or primarily about the center picture. On the left is one of our new pedestrian bridges at Morrisville Community Park. That was part of the sidewalk project that we did at the entrance to the park. In the middle, we have the construction of two giant culverts that ended up being 100 feet long each that run underneath Morrisville Carpenter Road. They're seven feet by 10 feet. They're concrete, and they were poured in place. The story I'm going to tell about that picture and about that part of the project is, at one point, the contractor came to us asking for a 90-day road closure at Morrisville Carpenter Road. I think we knew that that was probably an impossibility, so we worked really hard, and our staff came up with innovative ideas to make it so that we only closed the road for three days, one long weekend. But that, that took a clever thinking and a lot of good engineering help on that, but we, we actually came, came up with the idea before the contractor did, so we're pretty proud of that. But all in all, that's, that's pretty spectacular. Those are, those are probably the biggest culverts that we've got the towns ever built here in Morrisville. Top right, as you know, the fire station is looking pretty good. You've got actually brick facade coming in on the front face of the building. And just below that is Franklin Upchurch Street Sidewalk that just got recently built. So I'm pretty proud of all this kind of work. We've got a lot more pictures and a lot more fun to come, but I'm happy to answer questions and actually think I finished early, so.
Did I have any? It's great stuff. I love the, the bridge that'll help on the walk to, walk to school days, so everyone can be just like that. And all our events that we have in the park, now people can stay on the sidewalk. That's wonderful, great job. Mayor Pretend Johnson, followed by Councilmember Skargis Johnson.
Okay, we can't, we can't let this night go by without saying thank you for the three day, three days versus the 90.
Yeah, nobody really knows. I actually told Martha about that like a few weeks ago, I think, because she didn't even know that we kept it quiet until we worked it out.
Best thing is, is you never heard it.
Yeah.
Right, well, that's why these presentations are so critically important, that we hear what happens behind the curtain that we won't ever hear about unless you come before us. So thank you for that, because that would have been, that would have been a, it wouldn't have been a disaster, but that would have...
It would have been difficult. The road was, was failing, and the old culvert was, was actually failing the whole time. So we had a lot of work to shore it up and keep it from failing in the middle of construction.
I can remember talking about that culvert years and years ago, so that, that's not a surprise that it was a hassle. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Skargis Johnson, followed by Councilmember Rao, please.
Yes, thank you for, you know, not cutting off a lifeline for the town. It pretty much is in the middle, right next to our main activities, so that's a great thing. The one thing I did want to emphasize to you and to your team is the value of those Monday updates for the Morrisville Carpenter Road. And I have subscribed for over a year now, I think, because we've been offering those. But I, it really helps bring the message directly to the individuals that want to hear that information, and it's recurring, even if there's no change, there's at least some confidence in that.
Reminder.
You know, just every Monday, knowing that there's an understanding of where the project has moved. And I encourage you to do that for other major projects in the future, for those individuals, businesses, residents, and so forth that want to subscribe. You know, I think that would add a lot of value to the...
Yeah, we certainly found a lot of value in it. Communications was very, very, very helpful to us because it was, it was that weekly update, and then we would, we had the message boards on the street, and we would try to do as much communication. And I think we learned that that was really the smart move for big projects like this.
And I know that is a bit of work every Monday to do that and prepare that and think about it, but it is really appreciated across the town through, you know, the neighborhoods and beyond, and the schools too, right? So it is a success. So thank you very much for implementing and maintaining that throughout the project. It's really important.
Yeah, I'll echo, thanks to Maria Buschke and Comms for working with you on that, because these were painful times, but they're less painful when you have the information so you know what's going on.
That's right.
Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Maramella.
Yeah, my question is, great presentation, and I think you played it out, executing tremendously. My question just has to do with, I'm a little bit confused. So I was at the DFG Summit last week, and they had a little bit of a discussion about the Department of Transportation's Fall and Disadvantaged Business Program, where, you know, they could actually provide opportunities for minority or business subcontract with the larger ones, right? So those are for DOT projects, and it's pretty much the responsibility of the state to educate our, what I'm trying to say is that we have a lot of minority companies here, smaller engineering firms, typically we don't see them bid on these projects if they're DOT projects. But when it's a project like Morrisville Carpenter Road, even though it's a DOT road, does that qualify as a DOT project, or is that a town doing a project that's on our own?
So it's still a DOT project. They, in that, you know, for Morrisville Carpenter Road as an example, it was, they provided 70% of the funding. We, we enter into a municipal agreement with them so that we can manage the project for them. It's still a DOT project. I mean, what, what generally happens, just for information like on design consultants, we're required, whether it's us or the state, are required to put out a request for qualifications and select the best consultant on qualifications, not on price. So it could be a minority firm that is the best qualified to do the job, but we are required to put together a selection panel and select the highest qualified firm, not on price. That's actually, it's actually federal law, and it goes on all over the states. So sometimes it's a little trickier. The state does have some incentives for minority business and stuff like that, but it is a little trickier on, it's probably easier on the construction side than it is on the consulting side.
On the construction side, yeah, I'm just trying to, you know, I'm just trying to get a better idea of, you know, how they can educate our minority business programs, but that's really a DOT responsibility, to get the message out about it. It's not really a town responsibility, but it'd be nice to see businesses in Morrisville, especially when we talk about diversity and equity, that from a business perspective, people would know that a project, even if a larger contractor got it, that they could actually subcontract with that contractor, so.
And they do a lot. Some, a lot of our contracts have subcontractor minority goals that they, they try to meet or have to meet, depending on the contract. And when they're state contracts like, like Morrisville Carpenter, there are some of the subcontractors were minority businesses.
Okay, I was curious. Thank you.
Councilmember Maramella, please.
Thanks, Mark. Excellent presentation. I think this picture, for 100 words, a thousand, I was just thinking after looking at the script, we have drone experts for any, I would love to have a time lapse video of like the whole thing, because that would show the people, you know, what was done, and we have most projects coming, like, you know, especially the fire, fire station, or, you know, the downtown that is going to be, the other projects, you know, as a time lapse and show that, like the progress that's getting done in the town, that you don't even have to send a note, you know, that's worth a million.
So I appreciate that you brought that up. We have a secret solar-powered camera at the fire station that's doing that right now. And it's been doing it since the beginning. I don't even know if I told Martha that, but we have, we, we have something like that for the, we didn't, we didn't have the idea at the time for this project, but we do have, and sometimes it's hard because I, where can you mount something that's going to capture the entire, but at the fire station, we have something mounted that's capturing time lapse.
Or swimming pool and...
Yeah, it's fun.
Beautiful.
Yeah. I'll make a note of that for some other projects, too.
Okay. You finished within time and well under your seven and a half minutes for your part of the presentation, so kudos to you, sir.
He used to talk fast.
He got the benefit of a late timer.
Oh, is that right, slacker? I didn't notice that.
Let me know that, I think it was next.
Oh, my. A lot of people getting torn under the bus. Let's keep it moving.
All right, Ben Mills is going to come talk to us about stormwater.
Are we doing just questions on these presentations? Is that where we are now?
Pretty much. I mean, if you have an observation you think is helpful to them going forward.
In a reminder, we can capture questions throughout the weekend, et cetera.
Mr. Mills.
All right, well, good evening, and thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk here tonight. Before I get started, I just want to kind of say, over the past decade, you know, Morrisville's known to have a strong stormwater program, but I really think we ramped that up in the last couple of years, and I could probably say we have one of the strongest programs in the state, if not the strongest one. And that's really, that kind of happened with the support of Town Council, just talented employees that came over the past years, and our innovative nature. So with that being said, you can see, you can see example of that on the first slide. Tony there is measuring sediment levels in a very old SEM, I think it's over 20 years old, and we're just making sure it's performing as it's designed and detaining really the larger storm events and not causing any extra flooding in the area. And as far as I know, we're the only municipality in the state that's doing this measurements. All right, so here's our stormwater division. You'll see two familiar faces up there, mine and Tony's. We've been here a little over five years, so I think we really had some stability in that aspect. Brad and Alex were hired this fiscal year, so they're, they're brand new. Brad came down from Michigan from a civil engineering firm, and Alex came over from NC DOT. And they're, they're very excited for this opportunity to work for the town, and definitely look forward to mentoring them more in the future. All right, so I said, one of the best stormwater programs in the state, well, I think the highlights here kind of attest to that. Probably our biggest one is winning Stormwater Project of the Year. That was presented at the APWA North Carolina Conference. Also at this conference, you know, I hope co-present our Stormwater Master Plan that we finished up a couple of years ago. And everyone's very impressed with our Stormwater Master Plan, and I've talked to a lot of people across the state about it and, you know, given advice how they could implement it in their community as well. So we're kind of leading the way in that aspect. With that Stormwater Master Plan, you know, it helped adopt the first-ever Stormwater Capital Improvement Program here at the town. Also being a big part is Town Council support for increasing the stormwater utility fee we have here at the town to fund the projects. Another highlight I would like to mention was, you know, we just won a big, big grant with the Golden Leaf Foundation for Wilson Air Lane. with the Golden Leaf Foundation for our Wosner Lane project. And I can tell you, after they published that we won the award, had a few people around the county and outside the counties, contacted me and said, how can we get into this grant game? We want to, we want to get some grants too. So that's, that's pretty cool. I guess on the flip side, some of the challenges, we kind of list on the screen, being a smaller division, you know, having two new stormwater engineer employees, it takes a little more effort training them, getting them to speed, because that's half the division. Along with that aspect, you know, inflation hits us a little bit harder because we have a smaller budget with some of our capital improvement projects. And I'll talk about some of the increasing regulations in the next slide. All right, so what are we doing and what can we look forward to? Well, July 1, we got the green light to implement phase one of the C I P projects and we hit the ground running. So the Wosner Lane Culvert project, you know, we got to, got a consultant to help us with the design, we got the plans approved, we got permitted, we won a grant, and we're going out to bid next Wednesday, February 1st. So that's moved along very nicely. Another project in the phase one is McCrimmon Parkway Culvert. And, you know, that happened to coincide with the N C DOT McCrimmon flyover. So we were kind of looking at the aspect that they're able to take on that project with no expense of the town. That's kind of a rare occasion, but, and the third final project that's in our phase one is Savannah subdivision. And we should have a better timeline of that once we get our Wosner Lane numbers in for One other thing I'd like to mention is with the addition of the extra stormwater engineer, you know, we're able to start doing more increased condition assessments and we'll look forward to doing that in the latter half of this fiscal year. I don't know in the past if you heard me mention, but the new nutrient rules kind of been looming over, you know, the area for a while now. And it's been pushed back a few different times. Right now, the target date's fall 2023 for the town of Morrisville to adopt and implement a program. So currently I'm working with the state right now to get a program like that in place. A further update on some of our future C I P projects, we have a stream restoration project and kind of a greenway project as well behind Page Street. And we're getting close to obtaining a property back there to make that project possible. I'll just point out two things on this slide. One thing that really stands out to me is the public outreach events. We did 27 for our division on the last calendar year. That's a lot, and Tony really heads that up, so whatever support he needs, the rest of the division gives to him. The other thing you would notice, we, we updated a stormwater, or we made a stormwater master plan implementation, kind of tracker sheet down there, tracker bar. And, you know, since July 1, we hit the ground running and we made some progress on that. I'd just like to say, the, the money the council gives to us, we're utilizing it and it's not just sitting there. We're, we're making great progress. All right. With that being said, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
One quick question, if you go back a slide, about the increased stormwater assessments.
Yep.
Is that going to be a lot, like on HOA properties, their responsibility? Are we?
So this is just being more proactive with condition assessments with town maintained infrastructure, storm drains, more.
So that's our stuff?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, because I was going to say, work with comms if we're going to be talking to HOAs and letting them know that their stuff's not working well or something like that. Okay, Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Rabadi. I'm sorry, that one was still up. Councilmember Rabadi.
Do you still have that program? I remember I participated in it a couple of times where citizens, or I remember Tony used to run it. That's what made me think of it. Are we still doing that? Because those were fun and I think they added a lot of value.
Yeah, that kind of, we still offer them every now and then, but it kind of got moved to, I think Parks and Rec took it over, having different groups of trash pickup and stream cleaning events and stuff like that. But I believe during Creek Week, we'll offer a couple of opportunities for stream cleaning events as well.
And I think the stewardship program has actually moved into public works now.
Oh, okay.
As a part of that as well. Yeah, stream cleanings are fun. Okay. Nice job, sir. Keep up the great work.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ben. All right.
Home stretch.
Small but mighty. Shandy.
Only thing standing between home and the door.
Shandy's one of our most uplifting employees we have, so we're ending on our high note with Shandy.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you. I appreciate us getting an opportunity to come and speak to you and talk a little bit about our departments. So with our inspections department, we have 10 full-time staff and a part-time plan reviewer. There's our org chart up there. One of the accomplishments that our staff has achieved since moving over to inspections is the certifications that we are achieving. So you'll see up here, they have 47 that we've accomplished. And you might be wondering why the certifications, why so many? So the North Carolina Qualifications Board sets out rules that we're required to follow for folks to be able to legally inspect and conduct plan review. There are five different trades and each trade has three levels. There are rules of how quickly you can test, the experience you must have, and each of those levels covers a certain building type and size of what they can actually inspect. Most of our commercial in Morrisville is level three, which is the highest certification. So our staff is working to achieve those to make sure that we can provide services on all of the construction that's going on. And then we do have just the certifications that Mary, Bob, and Greg have achieved, those are just for this fiscal year that they've managed to accomplish. So they are working hard to get those completed, and I'm very proud of them. Pass rates for state exams are very low for building and electrical. Electrical hovers around 17% and building level one of 34%. And that's in addition, they have to take that after they complete a class, a class test, and have a final state exam. So they have been working very hard and I am very proud of them and what they've accomplished. So a few things that we have gotten done this year. So Greg McDaniel, he is also a licensed electrical contractor. He is one of our inspectors. He has been selected to serve on the Electrical Exam Development Committee through D O I. So as I said, when you have a 17% pass rate, this is an opportunity for us to be making changes to those exams in the field. It is a big deal to get selected to these because you are making changes that will affect every inspector in the state. Excuse me. So he's been working on that. I have been asked to host a couple educational sessions through the North Carolina Fire and Life Safety Educators Conference and the North Carolina Fire Chiefs Fire Prevention School. And in those, we talk a lot about building relationships amongst our departments and code officials working together. And then I'm serving on the International Code Council Fire Exam Development Committee. The International Code Council is actually the writer of all of our code books. So it is a nationwide committee, and in North Carolina, we do adopt the international codes and we make North Carolina amendments to those. We've also been working on public outreach, so you may have seen us at some of the town events, Farm Ridge Market, I know we got to chat a little bit. It has been really nice getting out into the community and talking with folks about what we do, taking away some of the mystery of building permits, and also providing information on when you need a building permit. It's much harder for homeowners to try and rectify once they've done the construction, so we're trying to make that process easier. We have been receiving good feedback and a couple of our neighboring jurisdictions, their residents have said, how come we're not doing it over here? So I feel like we're leading in that area and I'm excited for that. We're also meeting our permit turnaround goals and our next day inspection requirements. So what that is with plan reviews, we actually have published deadlines. Those are internal that we've created that we feel are accomplishable through all our departments, because the building permit review is not just my team. It's engineering, stormwater, planning, we have town of Kerry's pretreatment, Wake County Health, Fire, so many different folks working together. So we do all work in conjunction to make sure we meet those timelines. And then the next day inspections, that was actually started about six years ago, and we were the leader of, we're going to offer next day inspections if you request it by two. There's actually legislation now that says we have to do that with a 12 o'clock cutoff time. That was easy for us. We were already doing it. So we're very proud that we are meeting that and are able to provide a quicker turnaround so these projects can get moved forward. Some of our challenges, industry-wide, we are facing shortages of building inspectors. The certifications are very difficult to obtain. There is a lot of retiring occurring. It's not specific to just us. We're seeing that across the state, across the country. So that is something that we are actively looking at, and that is why we're working on developing our staff, the certification incentive program, to help retain and recruit the folks that we have. One of our internal promotions I was really happy for is Mary Hall. She was one of our permit technicians. She actually started taking classes on her own while she was a permit technician to start seeing if that was something that she was interested in, and she was successful in the classes. We promoted her and she has hit the ground running. So I think it's great to see that internal development. Our certification course offerings and availability are challenges that we work with. We're at the mercy of what the state has up there with instructors. Intergov continues to be something we work with. While we do have patches and different things that affect some of our internal workflows, overall, the program is doing what it should. We're able to do everything online, payments, plan review, inspection scheduling. It is fantastic to have something where I am not lugging around 200 pages, six copies, distributing every time you have a change, reprint. I mean, it's nice. All the digital Kimberly Conley's not here, she would be super happy about that. And then we're constantly monitoring different legislative processes that may impact how quickly our plan reviews have to get turned around, our inspection times. So we do monitor that. And then we are on a six-year code cycle. So every six years, we get new codes. We're expected to have the 2024 codes coming out this year with a required effective date of 2025. There's typically an overlap, so we'll see it in 2024. Designers will have the option to start using it, and all of our staff will have to get trained on every new code that's changed as part of that. And then lastly, just a few projects that we have in the pipeline. These projects I selected because they all require level three inspectors. So I'm just trying to highlight the importance that we train our staff and that they continue to work toward these certifications, because as I said, if they don't hold that level three, they cannot legally inspect or plan review these buildings. So we have Pathway, Spark, Novel, the apartment buildings. These will keep us very busy, and when we say new construction, we're talking about ground up. Each of these buildings will have anywhere between 80 and 100 inspections by our team. And then just a little bit of our workload, our inspection numbers, staff did a little over 9,000 inspections, and then our plan reviews have increased 4.6%. And then the number of permits issued, a very slight dip, it only dipped by 35 in our fiscal year prior was actually our highest number issued ever in our department's history. So we're staying busy. 88% of our construction, we say existing, meaning it's an alteration or remodel, with the other percentage being our new construction ground up. And then the division in the permits, 59% is residential of what we do. For us, when we say residential, it's one and two family dwellings and townhomes. That's because our residential code only covers those. Multifamily for us fall under commercial, so that's why we do clarify our commercial permits do include multifamily. With that, I heard the little beep, so I figured I better not give it too much. What questions can I answer for you?
Councilmember Garamella.
I think excellent presentation, Shandy. And I always say, like, you know, I would agree what I said to her is, the inspection department actually self-capes themselves, you know? They generate the highest revenue. And so anytime, you know, any request comes, it's kind of, for me, it's a no-brainer, you know? And I know you guys are working during the COVID time and also a lot of reconstructions were going on. And the only thing my advice would be, like, because what are the new rules? Like, you know, air conditioning, you need a permit. Some people don't know, you know? They are just going and doing. So if that can be publicized, like a few small things, not a big ones, then that would help a lot. Because I know many in my neighborhood are just going and doing, but the licensed guy is saying, I need a permit, and what he's saying, and other guys are saying, no, just do it without it. So if that can be clearly messaged out, you know, what all you need permit for any change, that will be very helpful to the residents who are, you know, don't know much about.
You are 100% correct, and I do want to add that we have actually been working with communications to send out messages through the HOA newsletters, the email blast to start those conversations. And we're looking at right now, what meetings can we attend to start getting that message out? Because you're right, we get a lot of homeowners that maybe signed on with a contractor who didn't know he needed a permit, or they're trying to do the work themselves. And so we're trying to get ahead of that so that we can help people through the process and make it easy for them. So it's a great point.
Okay, Councilmember Rao.
This may seem like a strange question, but I just was curious, as you do inspections, are you either forms like pads? Is it automated?
It is all automated. So they actually have an app on their iPads that they take out. It gives them their workload every morning that they see as soon as they open that app up. It tells them what time they need to be at what inspection. They do their report online, it's emailed, it is all electronic. There is no paper that we take.
What is that called?
Blue Beam is our plan reviewer. IG Inspect is our app that is tied to Intergov.
Forms based, like you have an app and then.
It's an app that they're just, we give them a checklist already, they type, pass, fail, they can add comments, they hit send, and off it goes. IG Inspect.
Okay, great.
Yep.
That's fantastic. The final question is, so time to time, you know, people are going through the process, say, well, I couldn't get this inspection through, whatever. I mean, is there, is there, you know, kind of like, what is your advice in terms of just when people are having problems going through the process? Is it best to go through you, the administration, to sit down, you know? Because, you know, I know that's a tough part of your job, right, is to make people about building the code, or you can't do it, they're not going to give them.
Yeah, so they can work with any of our staff. Everyone is very open to, hey, let us know what's not working, what can we help you out with? Do we need some additional code interpretations? I'm always available as well. We do recommend to folks that they start with, we have a group email, it's permits@townofmorrisville.org. I'm in that, and so are the permit technicians and the permit tech supervisor. So I'm always monitoring those. If something looks like I'm foreshadowing, this is going to be a problem, I'll step in and see what we can do to help facilitate. But that's the quickest way. We have a very quick response time. They will have a response as folks within an hour, if not sooner, because there's so many of us just making sure that it's getting taken care of.
Lots of kudos. I know a few years ago, the development community thought that there was opportunities for us to do better, and we obviously are. So thank you very much for all your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Well done, everybody, and thank you all, the staff, who stayed to support each other. I think that's wonderful. That says a lot about the town, because it's a late night, and we really appreciate all of you. So thank you all very much.
Well, and the staff that didn't present that came tonight. Appreciate you, you as well.
The audience is smiling.
Okay. So.
Thank you.
Good work. I'll pass it back to Martha Page to tell us a little bit about tomorrow.
So, so quick logistics, we have bags for you with the remainder of your retreat package, and you can just take these materials and fit it right into tab one. And then you have everything that you'll need for the agenda, and if you want to read it tonight or tomorrow on the bus, you'll have some opportunity. A reminder, many of the presentations are facilitation guides for you. This is your retreat. We're not leading you as much as listening to you. This is sort of what you requested from us. So the, the materials are more just prompts for you to get started. We're asking you to be here tomorrow at 2:00. A reminder, if you're going home to pack, we're casual. Plan is to leave by 2:30. We have a bus with a driver that will be with us the entire weekend. Eric and Michael will be with you on the bus. Aaron, TBD. Senior staff, many of you know, we got included in the Language Access Collaborative with UNC Chapel Hill. We have our first workshop tomorrow, so we'll lag behind you about an hour, but we expect we'll be there for dinner. Dinner is scheduled tonight, and somebody can tromp in when that is. Again, social only, no business. You're all staying in the Embassy Suites. The rooms should be ready for you when you get there. Lunch or breakfast is supplied by the hotel, so you'll have at your leisure to eat before you enter our meeting room. The meeting room is at the Embassy Suites. We'll meet there, we'll have lunch there, and then we will be working or having a guest with Wilmington, the city of Wilmington, for our second dinner and minor downtown stroll, weather contingent, and to learn a little bit more about development opportunities. Plan is to come back on Sunday. What did I miss, everybody?
Unless you're nodding.
Bring your binder. Bring your binder.
You will be meeting, we will have reservations around United Six.
I think Michael James is right there.
You'll get to a place with good weather.
The guy who just stood up.
And you can see potentially their new pavilion downstairs. Where we have some special events. And then on Saturday night, we will dine at the Floriana. We have a private room at 8:30. You remember that? Fancy. Again, on the waterfront, all weekend and it's stored on.
2 o'clock.
2 P M. I've entertained a motion to adjourn. I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. 7:00, it's 10:10. And to be clear, we're not just planning on coming back on Sunday, we are coming back on Sunday. 10:10. Who made the motions, please?